Pursuant through a state of Rhode Island Executive Order 2025, April 15, 2020. The council meeting Wednesday, May 6. Participants who will be participating in the meeting via telecommunications include the town council, Second Ward and Andre Bujo, Christopher Willie, Martha Ball, and Sven Riesem. Also interim town manager Jim Kern. And EMA directors Peter Gemp, William McComb. And Chief Ben Carlon. We also, I believe, have Kate McComb, Harbor Master, on the line. Town Solicitor Catherine Marola. We have Dr. Clark from the Medical Center on the line. Also, Dr. Tom Warcup and Nurse Lori Anderson. Like to welcome everyone. I believe. Yeah, that's it. Like I said, thank you all for coming. On the agenda, first item on the agenda is the Wardens Report. We're going to have plenty to talk about this afternoon, so I don't need to go into any more details, except for one thing. I'd like to take a moment to make a note of the imminent departure of Dr. Mark Clark from the Black Island Medical Center. Since his arrival to the island, Dr. Clark has provided our community with the highest level of healthcare and has been a strong component of the development of the Medical Center into a well-rounded facility. Those who have known him best describe him as an award-winning educator and inspiration to his staff and students, a visionary and a consummate professional and a caring physician. We've appreciated and benefited from his counsel and his wisdom, especially during the weeks of this pandemic. We know he would not leave without knowing we were in good hands with the displacements, and that we are grateful. With the world being what it is at the moment, the opportunity for a farewell party is not to be. So I'd like to take the opportunity on behalf of the town to wish Mark, Mike, and their family the best of luck in new endeavors and at the very least, good health and happiness in life. Mark, thank you for all that you've done for us.
You're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
The next item on the agenda will be to discuss and act on an amendment to the amended emergency ordinance to the town in New Shore, April 15, 2020, including but not limited to changes to those activities. Various different activities. The information that we'll be discussing. Someone's clashing things around there. The information we'll be discussing, I believe, is available on a COVID-19 economic planning framework that was put together by Sven Riesem. Sven, would you like to start the discussion?
Yes, my pleasure, and first of all, thanks, Ken, and again, Dr. Clark, thank you for everything, and welcome, Tom and Lori. The concept, and I'll be very brief in this, the concept of the planning framework, especially a few weeks ago, was giving us some light to the end of the tunnel and trying to deal with things in phases. And as the agenda says, today, we're focused on 4.1 and 4.2, which was, if I could talk about it. And by the way, for anybody who's listening, this is on Clerk base. If you click on to the amended ordinance, it's after the amended ordinance. But without going into word-by-word detail, 4.1 and 4.2 really talks about increasing some worker activity from shelter-in-place. Secondly, it talks about adding, in essence, office workers onto this, so a real estate agent or new frame pictures or something like that. And then it also talks about some off-island service providers who have to do things like radon testing, cleaning, you know, things, very, very specific fields, and you'll see those. And then lastly, it talked about allowing some trades to come onto the island to provide opening assistance for different businesses. So as we all know, in order to get some of the approvals for the minimum housing, one has to have their alarm system checked or finish the HVAC or things like that. And so in the process of being able to open, you need to get these things done so that you can get the inspections, so they can get, in theory, the license to open at some point. And that's what 4.1 and 4.2, there's a lot more detail than I just said, but I don't think it's worth to go into that. Catherine Marola has taken those points, I believe, and we can all discuss it, but really put those into an amended ordinance, which was on the Clerk base as well, and I think everybody has. So as we talk about 4.1, 4.2, it is, to the best of my knowledge, all of it's in the ordinance. And Kathy, can you take us through that? Three, two, and one, one being sort of, quote-unquote, I'll use the word "opening", or at least the reopening in this new COVID world. It sort of walks us through a plan, but, you know, depending on how the conversation goes, we can go into those stages, or maybe we all have a discussion around sort of joining the state of Rhode Island. So Ken, I don't know if we need to go into detail, but I think it may be easiest to either talk about those phases of the plan or really the amended ordinance itself, and that would be my recommendation to jump to that.
Okay, Sven, hold on for a second. Just everybody who's on, everybody who's participating in the meeting. If you're not speaking, please mute yourself, because any noise in the room is banging through on the computer. So any rustling of papers or opening of cans or slamming of doors is coming right through, and it's drowning out whoever's talking. So please, anyone who's participating in the meeting, if you're not speaking, please try to mute. Thank you, Sven, for the intro. I see Chris, do you have your hand up, Chris Willie?
Yes, I say we just jump right to the ordinance and start at the top and go right down it.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. Now, I will make note that, I believe on Clerk base, was posted two drafts, of one, draft number one and draft number two of the ordinance. Catherine, do you want to explain the difference? Catherine Marola?
Yeah, the primary substantive difference is the addition of the office workers category.
And that was in the number two one?
Yes, and that is that paragraph C of nine.
Nine, okay, all right. So let's, I guess we could start looking at that one, and once we get up to nine, we'll have the two to look at. So going through the ordinance, obviously, the first change in red is indicated in number one, and that's just the active dates will be changed accordingly. Any other changes in terms of two or three? Or let's take it one by one, in section number two, and that's all town offices. Any questions or comments on number two?
I'm ready to jump to nine.
Well, we have, we have number five in between there, and number five, I think we've talked about having. Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Can we just go number by number? I have questions on all of them.
Sure, okay, number two then.
Two, that would be up to the town manager, obviously, right?
Yes.
Okay, number three?
Okay, hey, hold on, anyone have any other comments on number two?
No.
Okay, number three, go ahead, Chris.
Number three, is it necessary, if it's in compliance with the state, the state allows that right now? Do we have to have it in our local ordinance?
This is Kathy Marola, no, you do not.
Can we take it out?
If it's in compliance with the state, I can compare it line by line, then it does not need to be in there.
Okay, that's gonna, just Ken, so.
Identify what it is.
Number three is.
Can I just say one thing? I don't mean to interrupt, but that would take it out of the realm of the enforcement provisions of our ordinance, it would go to the state enforcement provisions.
Which I'm comfortable with, and that's gonna be the theme that I'm gonna follow, is getting in compliance with the state, so. If number three is not needed, I would recommend we take that out. And we don't have to do it.
Martha, go ahead.
It's in compliance with the state, so why, I just think if we start dropping things and not at least referencing the state, it's going to be confusing because they've already been there. And it's not in conflict, if I understand correctly.
Questions or comments?
I guess, my feeling is that personally, I think we will get to the state soon, and so then I think we're gonna basically get, walk, you know, depart from our ordinance and just join with the state. So the question is, do we want to do it piece by piece, which is a good way to do, I guess, or do we do it, you know, soon, very soon? So I guess I'd rather go wholesale and do it soon than weed away, but that's either choice.
Chris, go ahead, Chris Willie.
This ordinance expires Friday, correct?
Yeah.
All right. And we've been asked repeatedly to have some type of scheduled plan, call it whatever you want, as soon as possible, and this just goes, everything I'm gonna suggest goes in line with establishing that plan so we can start moving forward in a, let's just call it a solidified manner. A lot of things are up in the air, they're only up in the air because we're not consistent with the state. So where we can be consistent in this, with the state in our ordinances, I think we need to be.
And. So then you're still, you're in favor then of eliminating it from the ordinance as opposed to just leaving it in because it's?
Yeah. Our ordinance should be specific to what we're different on than the state, if we're gonna be consistent with the state.
Okay, Andre, did you want to weigh in on that?
I really don't have a, I mean, if we're gonna, I agree with Chris that we should be looking at what the state's doing on these, so. And I also agree with Martha that if, you know, people have seen this in there already, so the enforcement end of this, you know, I mean, it'll still be taken, I mean, I I, I don't have an opinion on it, I just, I'm fine with it. But I do, you know, I think if we're gonna start being in line with the state, then our ordinance should reflect what's different from the state.
Okay, well, then that would mean taking it out, I think, so. Okay. Okay, Chris, number four?
Same thing. I think three, four, and five are we can eliminate all of them because we're gonna be consistent with the state. Number four is gatherings of people in excess of five or more, we're not different than the state. And when the state changes, instead of us having to come back and discuss when the state change, you know, when that happens, if it's eliminated, we don't have to come back and have that as a topic of conversation. So when the state goes to ten, ten people, then the Black Island will go to ten people.
It flows.
It flows with the rest of the state as the state goes through phase one and into phase two. And I would like to reference phase one and two as we move forward with the, you know, with the plans in the subsections that Sven put together, where they fall. And then number five, I think is already on the agenda to be discussed as far as non-essential town meetings are canceled, so that I think that's coming out because essential business was allowed to resume at the town level. So that would make sense to take that out.
Okay, so number four, just to be clear for those who are just on the phone, number four is gatherings of people in excess of five or more on Black Island are prohibited, and as Chris said, that's already being covered by the state. And for those listening, number five is all non-essential town meetings are canceled or postponed, including without limitation the council meetings, town financial meetings, and all meetings, any town department, agency, quasi-municipal agency, board, or commission. And as Chris said, those are, that's been opened up by the state, so that could be removed also. Jim, did you have any input on this at this point?
I did, I wanted, Chris said it correctly, but I wanted people to be clear. The first time you said it relative to four, I think we, it was good to clarify what we're talking about. The limit now is five. Chris first used the word eliminated, and then, and then he went back and said, if the state goes to ten, we've had people that have heard us all say things and interpret what we said differently than we intended it, that all of the indications we have, the real point of my comment is all the indications we have are that the next threshold would be ten. I know people, some people are available to watch the governor on a daily basis, but I know a lot of people aren't. So, so do you want people to be concerned that you're gonna go from five, that we're gonna go from, the state's gonna go from five to fifty? Every indication is that it's gonna be from five to ten, and I completely agree with the basic approach that Chris has taken, which is that for, for, for the purpose of people who are trying to plan, which is what we're really getting to now, I think it's really important that they're not having to plan for two different kind of schedules and two different set of restrictions. And I think the state restrictions are also better known to people for people who live in more than one place and the other reasons that we've talked about, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Um, anything else on number five? Okay, number six talks about all town departments, agencies, quasi-municipal agencies, boards, commissions are instructed to fully cooperate with Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency and the Town and New Shore Emergency Management Agency in all matters regarding this ordinance. Comments on that?
I have none.
Yeah, no, just that I support that because I think it's time we start getting to the business of the town again.
Okay, so you want to leave that in?
No, I think, I think we should be getting meetings going, I think that should come out.
No, no, but you want to, do you want to leave that in?
Number six, Andre.
Oh, six. We moved along.
Yeah, okay, sorry. No comment on that.
All right.
Leave it in.
Sorry, I was checking on the state's reopening plan as you guys were talking about four, and you guys already went to five and now around six, so I'm a little behind, sorry about that.
So, so one question, one question is whether or not, one question is that if it's only addressed by the state and not by the town ordinance, does that mean the state will be enforcing it? Whether, whatever one that you want to talk about, not the town? Chris?
Enforcement, and we'll get to that later, I hope, but everything that, well, Chief Carlon's letter from 43220 says, follow the state statutes.
And that makes it easy to enforce.
As best we can, and we could have this discussion later, but I mean, it's, we need to have a discussion specifically on enforcement. I think that comes at the very end, so we know what we're encompassing, but.
I think that answers the question. All right, number seven. Yep, Jim, go ahead.
I know we're gonna have a bigger, we may have a bigger conversation about enforcement, but the memo from the Attorney General to the police chiefs that I forwarded to the council and is up on Clerk base, and also the memo I wrote, but specifically the memo the Attorney General wrote identifies specific enforcement protocols that include, as they would with normal state ordinances, like speed limits, the local authority, sometimes it goes through the Rhode Island Department of Health, but the local authority, local police authority, and how they are expected to interact with the state statutes, and in this case, executive orders.
Right. Okay, number seven is all the following licenses and permits are suspended during the effective period of this emergency ordinance. Entertainment licenses, liquor licenses, except for Class A licenses, except for the modifications of Class B licenses set forth in paragraph three of this emergency ordinance. Special event permits, outdoor license, outdoor entertainment licenses, taxi and motor vehicles for hire licenses, bicycle motorized, bicycle motorized, tricycle, and motorized scooter licenses. In addition, no vehicles of any kind may be rented on Black Island. Comments on that one? Chris Willie?
Can we seek clarification from the state specific to bicycles, motorized bicycles, tricycles, motor scooter licenses, any vehicle of any kind? And I'm asking because out of the numerous different plans for various industries, there's nothing I can find on this as far as guidance. The initial, and it wasn't, it wasn't anything solid, but this might fall under retail. And if it does, we need to treat it as retail. And that's gonna bring in some legal questions moving forward, so. I don't know if we can direct Kathy to, to. I'm kind of, when we're trying to get in line with the state, if retail in the state is slowly opening up, I want to know legally how we can keep or not allow this to open up, I guess, is the more direct question. The other things, special event permits, outdoor entertainment licenses, and Class A and B licenses for liquor are kind of a different category than motor vehicles for hire. And that's a different category than the, we have three categories in number seven.
Right.
And I think we need to differentiate, differentiate these because some of them, I think, will be considered as retail by the state. And that's basically everything that's rental.
Right. Sven Riesem?
I'm actually in agreement with Chris, and I think as, depending on where we end up here, as a next step, I'd love Kathy to come back to us and figure out how to break that apart, assuming we aren't gonna go to the state, but how to break that apart, and then how what the, what the structure is from the state, to Chris's point on the bicycles, et cetera. I just want to make sure, given our moped license and legal restrictions, that we're all okay.
Catherine Marola, Kathy Marola, do you have any input on this now, or do we, we need to get back to us with it?
Yeah, what I can say is, as you know, with regard to mopeds and certain kind of motorized vehicles, New Shore stands by itself, we have the ability to regulate. In order to see how that's gonna jive with the state, I'm gonna need to go through the most recent of the governor's emergency declarations, one by one.
Okay. Chris again, Chris Willie?
So can then, we add that to the list at the end of this under enforcement? Because if it's something that is, if it's designated as retail under the state, but we prevent it because we hold licenses, I want to know what the enforcement options are, if any, in the ramifications, okay? So. I don't want to necessarily, sorry.
That's right, my guess would be, as opposed to being similar to a retail predicament, it would be more likely to be somewhere along the lines of a, of a health club or something like that.
Yeah, I don't know, this just raises.
Yeah.
You know, I.
Rental or equipment and stuff like that, like you would, like you'd find at a health club. So it's probably.
Yeah.
So.
I think what I'm, basically, we need a little guidance from the state because this has had, this has ramifications, you know, a number of different levels, so. As far as the first three, or, you know, the first part of number seven, which is specific to the.
Special event?
Special events and Class A and B licenses for liquor and outdoor entertainment licenses, that can be discussed as a separate item, and then the taxis and motor vehicles for hire license, we've had numerous requests that we, from, from the Taxi Commission, I think, and members that have licenses to waive the requirement that they operate this summer because some of them have health concerns. And so, again, that's another category that, that I think we could address, not in an ordinance.
Yeah, well, we actually will, will take that into account somewhat in the third bullet on the agenda, too. But any other questions or comments on those now, from anyone? So we sort of, at this point, we're sort of holding number seven in limbo, if you will?
I think number seven is gonna be an A, B, and C, maybe.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the taxi and motor vehicles for hire licenses, we can, we have the cooperation of that group, it sounds like, and we can probably set a date that will issue those of, let's just say hypothetically, June 1st.
Well, maybe we should talk, maybe we should talk about that now in detail.
Okay. I'm in favor of, of allowing taxi operators to, to not operate if they don't want to, considering the circumstances, the majority, a lot of our taxi operators are over the age of sixty. And if they aren't comfortable for safety concerns, you know, health concerns, I don't think it's necessary that we make them use their license a certain number of days or a certain number of hours per day. I mean, I would certainly hope that there would be taxis available, but I'm willing to, to make those licenses effective June 1st, and those who want to opt out can opt out.
Chris, if I might, I see your hand, Sven, just a moment, if I might, at this point, I do have a a suggestion that we, what we might want to do is extend the motor vehicle for hire licenses from their expiration date of May 15th until June 30th of this year. And the April taxi renewal deadlines cannot be met this year. So one action would be to extend that expiration date from May 15th to June 30th so that the folks can have an opportunity, a bit of a longer opportunity to make that decision of whether or not they want to open or not based on how things transpire over the next few weeks. And then the other, the second part would be to talk about that, whether or not the licenses could be held in abeyance, as you suggested, Chris. Sven Riesem?
I know you just phrased that as a motion, which would be about extending the license, so I second that motion.
Excuse me, I was on hold, what was the motion?
Well, it was, it was a discussion to, it was a discussion to have the extending the motor vehicle for hire licenses from the expiration date of May 15th till June 30th of this year, so that the, because the April deadlines cannot be met, so that the opportunity would be there to pick the licenses up at a later time at the end of, end of June, you're gonna have to recuse anyway, right?
Right, no, I used to know where you were because I got lost when I dropped, the call got dropped when you were talking about, oh gosh, where was it? Back, further back in the, oh, about the motor vehicles, the rental, not, the rental of vehicles, the rental of bicycles, et cetera. Is it, we're getting a clarification, a legal clarification on that, right? Instead of just guessing?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, you just want to be sure of that, thank you.
So, Sven, any, Sven, you made a motion, I guess, does anyone have a second?
I'll second that, because I agree a hundred percent, the taxi drivers shouldn't be losing their license if they don't want to ride, if they don't want to, you know.
Yeah, so the motion, the motion is to be clear is that, just extend, is the first part is to, just the, the motion is just to extend the expiration date from May 15th to June 30th.
Second.
All right, seconded by Andre. Any further discussion on that motion? All is in favor, Andre?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sven Riesem?
Aye.
Martha, are you recusing?
Recusing.
Okay, and I vote affirmative, so that's a four, four in favor with one recusal to extend the deadline, the expiration date from May 15th to June 30th of this year. So now the second part of that will be about the discussion about the abeyance. And I think Chris has made, pretty much laid that out, we've had a discussion along those lines. We do have, we do have responses to a questionnaire that was put out, and it looks like there was a fair number, a fair number of taxi drivers who might consider not driving at all this year for reasons of health and safety, which if, by all predictions, the economy is slack by thirty or forty or fifty percent, the demand might not be there anyway, so that would allow those to decide to stay on the road to have a better chance of making half a season out of it. So I would certainly be in favor of allowing an abeyance for this year without a loss of license as a result.
Second.
I guess I made a motion, and Andre seconded it, seconded it, discussion, Sven Riesem?
I, I think what we just did, and really, Chris, thank. I, I think what we just did, and, and really, Chris, thank you for starting this. Um, I think what we just did was you said, hold the licenses, uh, current, and, and I think we're all have had individual conversations, different cab drivers. I think we're all very sensitive to the health concerns. I think we're all very sensitive to the number of ridership, et cetera. My question is, do we need to rush into changing the license right now? Or should we hear from the taxi cab drivers in a more formal way? It, it's not going to change anything, but I, I feel like we're, I feel like I'm a little bit isolated. I mean, I've heard from two people, and there are many others. So I guess my question would be, is there a reason to rush into a vote now on this? Or just wait a meeting or two, and I'm, maybe it's moot.
Chris Willie?
Yeah, I think it's, it's certainly not going to hurt anything, Sven, and I, I think that there should be a broader discussion on what other licenses might people want not to use because of the current situation. Um, if you have to use a liquor license to retain it, is that the next license we want to entertain not making people use? If somebody doesn't want to open this summer because they can't, because of the, of the pandemic, is that a negative thing or is that a positive? I can see both sides of it, but we might want to discuss that. Um, I don't know if now's the time, but maybe at some future point. You know, uh, a, a, another, and, you know, another, uh, bar or restaurant that, that can't open or are forced to open because they feel they need to use their liquor license, I don't, I, I'm willing to consider both sides of it, basically.
All right, Chris, uh, Sven Rissam?
Just back, and, and I think, you know, one, we have both taxi licenses, then we have the bus license. It's all sort of wrapped into one. I, um, I would just love to hear from that group. Uh, and I think Chris brings in other licenses, but I, especially the one we're dealing with now. I'd love to hear from that group, and I don't see any cost in waiting a week or two because we just extended the license.
Well, I think, I think by, by doing the advance, the allowance for advance, it allows them to make that decision, and I don't think it's going to harm them in any way. If they decide they want to have their license, pick it up, they can use it, that's fine. If they decide they don't want to pick a license and use it this year for health, I mean, whatever reason, then they can do that. So both sides are sort of served. So I'm not sure that there's, there's a reason to, to hold off on it. I think it's something, it's a positive thing, and it leaves that option, both options open, and, and it's, um, it's, it's certainly doable.
Ken, Ken, it's Martha.
Martha, go ahead.
Good question. The liquor licenses, have they been picked up? Molly would know that.
Molly?
Don't they have, don't they have to be picked up?
I think so.
I think you're talking.
I think almost all have been picked up, yes.
Because the liquor licenses, the liquor licenses have a provision, uh, on them, a request to be closed from a certain date to a certain date.
Yeah.
And they, they've already been done, approved, picked, most of them have been picked up. And I do have a, hold a taxi license, but I don't, I think you're talking apples and oranges, at two different deadlines. And it's a, it's a different thing.
All right. So, um,
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Martha. So, um, any further comment on the, on the motion, or question? Just to be clear, we're, we're, um, the motion is to, uh, allow the, uh, licenses to be held in abeyance and not without loss of license for this year. Um, all those in favor, Andre?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sven?
Aye.
I approve, I approve also, so it's four to, four with one recusal.
And I'm recused.
I understand. Thank you, Martha. So that will, uh, that will change that one. Um, taxi motor vehicle for higher licenses. Okay, so then we go back to, we're, we're back to the, uh, other motor vehicles, and we're going to get, try and get some information, more information on that, to follow up on that. Um, special event permits?
Ken, hold on one sec.
Go ahead, Willie.
I mean, it might, I don't know how long that information is going to take to get, but, um, if this license expires, this ordinance expires, um, Friday, would we want to just extend that until we have further information? Or are we going to, is this going to get rewritten? We're going to have this basically edited? It's getting rewritten, and then we're voting on it, and we can discuss it then, but my question is, should we just be extended until the next meeting?
If we leave it in there, it'll be extended.
Right.
Right.
So, until we get information, we're just going to leave it in there.
Leave it in there until it gets.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
The idea, with the idea, we'll be dealing with it fairly soon.
Right.
So, um, back to the special event permits.
Can I, can I, man?
Your Andre, go ahead.
On that topic, I mean.
Which one?
Uh, taxis, motor vehicles for hire, bicycles, motorized vehicles, um. Wouldn't that, wouldn't those businesses, and you can, you can correct me, because you know, you can talk about this, but it's just a general question, because you rent cars and bikes, um. Wouldn't those be considered, um, in a reopening plan or something like that, or is that what we're getting clarification on? Like you as a bike, you as a bu, as a car renter, are you required to come up with a reopening plan to the state in order to, in order to reopen, or I, I'm just unclear?
I'm not sure that there's any guidelines of that yet.
Yeah, there was, it, I, there was two questions, actually, Andre. One was, there isn't any guidelines for how these entities are supposed, you know, like there is for a restaurant or retail store, or pretty much every other business.
She did say she's putting guidelines out. The governor said she's going to be putting guidelines out. They're going to be coming out.
Right.
Re, retail, I think, will be out tonight, restaurants, maybe, you know, later on.
Um, so that was one question, and the other question was, what is it classified as? So we know what to refer to it as, you know, is it retail? Um, I think it is, so we have to make sure we're talking about it in the same classification as the state, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, thanks, Ken.
Yep, so back to special event permits. Comments?
We are going to discuss it in point three, or?
Sven, go ahead. Yeah, what?
We're going to discuss it in point three, or, or should we discuss that now, because I guess?
We can, well, we were doing the other ones, so I just figured we'd.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm with you. So we, let's roll point three in here.
Let's roll it into it, yeah.
I, in my personal opinion, um, assuming that we are aligning with the state, Allah, from five people in a group to now 10, based on everything I've heard the governor on multiple days say, 50 is a ways away. Uh, and even 50 is a small thing, so I, I am not very excited to issue, really, I'll say, any event permits, um, or licenses, and I would, sadly enough, I, I, you know, I've talked to the double under committee, and, and I don't know that we can have a parade or even fireworks, but I, I, um, I, I guess I would be very comfortable in not having any licenses and events.
I believe we had indication, did we not, today, from the special events committee about the fireworks?
Yes, I believe we did.
Yes.
Martha?
Yeah, yeah, um, well, Lars Trottis was on the committee, said they were not going to have the fireworks on the 3rd.
Okay.
On the 3rd?
That's on their, their scheduled date.
Right, so.
On the 4th and July weekend.
Right, and, um, so does that mean that, all right, so that's just the 3rd, because?
Well, that's no way, I mean, as scheduled, that's all, I guess. I, I only put that date in because that's the date they were scheduled for.
All right, because, so, I, I don't know who's spoken to them, I haven't, but, um, it's not.
Yeah, I have.
It's, okay, so, it's scheduled on that date, and they're, they're not doing it on that date. Um, but there's a chance that maybe if things start looking better, you know, I just think the fireworks are a good thing for Block Island, and I don't think they're going to attract people to come out here. I think the crews for the fireworks are, are, you know, all that crowds are here for the whole shebang of 4th of July weekend, so, um, I wouldn't, personally, I, I mean, I know we're not voting on this, but there may be someday in August or the fall or late July that we could do that, and I, I actually think that might be a good thing.
Labor Day.
Yeah, I, I asked, I asked, um, him if they could look into seeing if they could, um, get their, you know, they, because obviously they had a deposit on it, if they could get it credited to later in the year, if it were poss, if it were possible. But I, I really didn't want to speak for them, because that was just a conversation I had with him, and he told me to convey to the rest of the, asked me to convey to the rest of the council that they were not doing the July 4th fireworks.
Okay, so meanwhile, other special events, um, if we're, if we're trying to align with the state, um, and the state is saying, setting numbers on the amount of people that can be attending these things, um, does, do we want to align with the state on these also, or do, or do we want to, um, have a, have a total, uh, non-occurrence of special events?
Well, isn't the, uh, state, the state numbers are going to prevail anyway, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we can't, we can't allow.
We cannot be less respectful than the state, right?
Exactly.
Chris Willie?
Uh, follow the state. I mean, I don't think her, I'm, I'm sorry, the governor will, I think phase one is five people, phase two is up to 10. It's not till phase three that there's, that there's up to 50. Um, so just align with the state. It makes this very seamless. We don't have to, I don't, I don't want to ban special events if the state is allowing a group to get married that's 50 people in late August. Um, it's, again, just align with the state on this. It's, uh, it's A enforceable if it's aligned with the state and practical.
Do they even require a special event license if it's 50?
I'm not sure.
Sven Rissam?
I'm, I'm actually with Chris a lot on this, where, uh, getting closer to the state is better in my mind. Uh, I, that doesn't mean we don't issue licenses or events, but we can just issue them in alignment with the state, because I believe there is a, a separation there, where the state doesn't issue some things, and we do. But I think the more we are with the state, uh, they've got the resources, they've got the people, they've got a lot of research going in, and, you know, we, to some degree, we could even say we could align with the state now. I think that may be a dramatic jump, but, um, you know, I think we're going to get there pretty quickly. I, I think Chris is doing this point by point, which is the right way to do it, but we're, we're walking there, uh, which I think is very appropriate. Um, given, especially given Chief Carlon and, and interim town manager Jim's, uh, Curran's letters, I, I think we're heading that way.
All right, any further, uh, Molly, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say that, um, the special event licenses are for only groups over 250 in the commercial zone and over 75 in the residential. So you're missing a lot of gatherings that, uh,
It's kind of a moot point.
Need a license.
Martha, go ahead.
Right, that, that was the question I was trying to, uh, ask. That, um, I, I thought the numbers were pretty high and way over anything the state is going to have. I mean, we can leave it in, um, just to, I, it doesn't really make any difference as far as I see, and if we're going to be in line with the state.
Okay. Um, Sven, your hands, oh, sorry, no, it's not. Uh, someone had, someone had a comment?
I, I, I did. This is Jim Curran.
Jim, go ahead.
Um, I don't, I don't think any of us expect the governor to go over 50. I do think you want to, uh, as the governor said, allow people to try to be creative. And I think this is an example of a place where if you're aligning with the state, go ahead and align with the state that way. If there is some kind of exception, uh, that goes over 50, you're, you're in a position to move without, without, move with that, without having to, 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 um, convene a meeting of the council to adjust their, their special event permit decision, I think. Um, I, as I said, I think it's unlikely that, that we go over 50 this summer, but, um, you know, there are things that are going to happen that, that we don't necessarily, uh, anticipate sitting here in early May.
Right. Okay. So the indication, uh, Catherine Marola, the indication is that we, we do not need to include special event permits, um, limitations in this ordinance, that it's going to be, it's going to be controlled by the state? Does, you take that?
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're taking it out?
Well, we, we, the indication, we're, we're just aligning with the state, so we really don't need to have it in there. Am I, am I wrong?
I, I, I was just trying to be sure I heard the right thing. Thank you.
All right. Um.
Outdoor entertainment.
Yeah, I was looking at that. All right, the outdoor entertainment licenses. Comments, Chris?
I don't know how these, uh, I'm not really versed in how these work, what's, and if Molly can, or Martha, or Kathy, or how are these, and what are these issued for? Is it something as simple as a guitar player on a porch, all the way to, um, you know, blues on the beach?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Basically, uh, Molly, do you have something?
No, you're correct.
Okay, I saw your hand up.
Isn't, hasn't blues been pulled?
I don't know. Uh, Chris?
So if this involves, um, if outdoor entertainment licenses are, are that, are that broad, I think a little more information from the businesses that, and we should have record of this, um, if there's a guitar player on the porch of a restaurant or hotel, and their dining capacity or operational capacity is limited, how does that play into that ability to even have that individual entertaining? Do you know what I mean, like?
Well, you can, you can still have the person entertaining. Obviously, you're going to, you might even, you might even have it, it might even be a situation where it'd be more, um, more attractive for them to have that person, because of, for instance, they're in a, they're, they're changing their venue to include uh, an area with, with, on their back lawn or something like that, then, you know, they, they would be able to have more people entertained as opposed to having them be cramped into a porch or something.
No, I, I don't disagree. I think, I think though, a little more input from, this is going to work into how these businesses operate under the restrictions that they're going to have. So that's, that's all I'm saying is.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't know how this is going to work into their business plans that are going to be very much modified moving forward. So it's, um, I mean, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. I just, you know.
I mean, it's basically, no matter what they're doing, whether, no matter what they're doing, it's going to come under the, what we're saying is it's going to come under the guidance of the state.
Right.
The number of people attending.
All right.
Whether they have one guitar player or two guitar players, it's still only going to, up, be allowed to have five, 10, 15, 20 people, whatever, whatever the state says, so.
Okay, well, then keep those in.
Martha?
Ken, can we, can we get a clarification on that? Um, because I, it seemed to be floating around the idea that vendors, like, for example, at the farmer's market, vendors didn't count in the total? Isn't it total, total? Do we know?
Catherine, we're all good to put on that?
Yes, it's to, it's total, total.
Okay, great, thank you.
Including the vendors then?
Including everybody.
So it's a, it's a body count, not, not a, not a customer count? Correct?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Catherine. Sven Rissam?
I, um, I think we should, uh, continue on with the, uh, outdoor entertainment licenses. Obviously, in this COVID world, uh, if, if a hotel wants to have a guitar player, a small little band for the 30 people there, the 10 people at least, or the, depending on what the governor does, the permissible number of people, let them do it, you know, that's, that's their, that's their decision. Uh, we, we know about it for all the reasons we have outdoor entertainment licenses, uh, and that whole license program, but I don't, I think they have to remain within the governor's restrictions at that point.
Right, and just to be clear, the restrictions, the, the restrictions that we have on outdoor entertainment licenses would not be made moot. That would still be full and, full in force and, and not voided, um, in terms of speaker, location, and volume, and sound, and everything else, so.
Yes.
Um, okay.
Ken?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, what I'm thinking about is including a general phrase to the effect that any licenses issued by the town are subject to the then applicable limitations of the state provision, so that we cover everything.
Thank you, Kathy Marola. That's a good idea. Yes, thank you. Um, any further comments or questions on that?
I just have one, Ken.
Chris Willie?
Number seven is specific to, these are the licenses that are suspended for the effective period of this ordinance.
That wording needs to be changed.
So, um, we've already handled the taxi motor vehicle for hire timeline, I think, if I'm, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
We're postponing until we have more information for the, um, motor scooters and motorized bikes, et cetera. How, what are we doing for this one? Are we suspended until, for the effective period of this ordinance as well, correct? Which is basically, I mean, basically. Which is basically, I mean, basically.
Yeah, I think it can be for now.
Yeah, okay. I just want to be clear.
Yeah, okay. Further comments or questions on number seven? Number eight, um, concerns travel to Block Island is discouraged for any non-resident. Full-time residents are encouraged to restrict travel off island for essential purposes, only such as medical care, care of a family member and obtaining food and other provisions. Um, I know there's been some discussion or some angst about the ability. Um, for instance, the ability for essential personnel and whatnot to come to the island, um, and then go back. Um, and, and, and that sort of thing. And, and there is some concern and some desire for island residents, full-time residents to be able to travel to the mainland, um, for medical reasons, medical purposes. Um, and, and shopping, if you will, just a shopping to go off, um, and not have to quarantine for two weeks once they get back. I don't know if that's, wants to be part of this discussion or not. Does anyone have any thoughts along those lines? Chris Willie?
This is a, uh, a suggestion, not an, it's not an enforceable part of the ordinance. Correct?
Yes, yes.
I would, I would agree with that statement.
That's number eight.
Discouraged or encouraged. It's not, uh, a strict rule.
Okay.
So.
Hold on. Go ahead, Chris.
Sorry, um, yeah, if, again, if this isn't something that is part, is an ordinance, then we can strike it, but I don't think the intent should be lost on, uh, what it says, which is, I, I still think what, what it says is still in effect, like, you know, discourage travel to and from the island, but it doesn't mean you can't do it, but do it safely.
Okay.
And I think that should be the reoccurring theme throughout this entire discussion and this ordinance is, is, um, is, you know, we're, we're not, you know, keep, people keep saying we're, we're opening the island. We're not like, the, the island's not closed. Okay. It's just, we travel to, it's very restricted right now. And we're trying to get back to business as safely as possible. So at some point, we can accept visitation, which isn't, which is at least six weeks away or five, six weeks away. So it's two different things, you know? And I, I think this part is important, but it's not a part of the ordinance. Um, so I think we can strike number eight.
Martha, do you have something? Martha, you there? Uh, Sven Riesem.
I, I, um, I think a rewrite of this somewhere to Chris's point of safety, health, welfare, being smart. Everything we've talked about for weeks now is sort of the, the big overriding, um, is, uh, comment here. I think eight, uh, can be struck and I agree that we should just, I, I don't want to say it's the obvious statement because it's obviously not obvious to everybody. Um, but I think a overriding comment about safety is more relevant than trying to talk about a non-resident or a summer homeowner or, you know, I think this is about safety, social distancing, wearing masks, respecting others, that kind of thing. So I, I would strike eight and consider it in some other way to make sure we communicate what Chris's point was.
Okay. Uh, anyone else?
I don't want to strike that. I don't want to strike it. I think it sends, I think striking it sends the wrong message. I think you can fold in, uh, and we can, we have them in the next section, the references to the, uh, CDC and the DOH guidelines. And that's, that's obviously an overriding factor with everything here.
Okay. Um, any other comments on, I mean, we're not, at this point, there's no motion to take any action on it. Does anyone want to make a motion or to have further discussion on it? Andre, we haven't heard from you?
Um, I agree with Martha. I think we should leave it because it's an introduction to nine.
Okay. All right. There's no, I don't think there's any harm in leaving it. Does anyone have any disagreement?
So why don't we combine the two?
I think Martha, I think Ken, what you were, what you has started to say about, um, uh, about, you know, people want to leave for doctor's appointments is actually number nine. So, um, you know.
Maybe we can roll it in. We'll leave it, let's leave it for now. Let's move on to number nine. So number nine, um, is the one that talks about the, um, uh, that's the long one and it talks about anyone leaving Block Island must immediately self-quarantine. Um, anyone arriving, I'm sorry, anyone arriving on Block Island must immediately self-quarantine as that term is hereafter defined for two weeks and thereafter must shelter in place as that term is hereafter defined and follow CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines. Nothing contained in this paragraph shall construe, so it's can, shall be construed as to prevent a person who is under the self-quarantine or shelter in place requirements of this paragraph from leaving the island. However, that a person under the self-quarantine requirements must proceed directly to the ferry or airport without making any stops. Um, and it's all residents, full-time or seasonal must shelter in place and follow CDC and Rhode Island of the Department of Health guidelines. There again, are we, are we moving towards the, uh, the state on, on this particular, these particular points? Uh, Chris Willie?
The, I think getting in line with the state is going to be important on this. Again, we've been very successful. I don't know how long, has it been eight weeks of, of this ordinance essentially?
Feels like an.
Eight, nine weeks, two months. Um, and I want to give credit to, um, basically the, the people that live here for the vast majority of which have done the right thing. Um, and you know, it's, it's kind of, it's nice to know that when we're reached out to asking, is it okay if they do X, Y, and Z off island, you know, a medical appointment? Do they have to self-quarantine? People want to know what the right thing to do is, and that's encouraging. Um, at the same time, though, it's difficult to enforce when it comes to the Block Island quarantine. It's, and it came up last week, I think, and over the weekend, there was, Ken and you and I had a discussion about, about it. Um, so I think it needs to be modified in light of what we're moving forward or moving towards with some of these, um, transient workers, um, and trades coming out to start working on commercial properties. Um, so I'd like to get, as the, the Rhode Island shelter in place order is still in effect, that's enforceable or that's actually a Rhode Island, um, it's codified. The arriving on Block Island and self-quarantine probably should be struck. Um, and then this is going to fold into when employees come and the employer, I would hope, as many of them have already indicated, have every intention of quarantining staff when they arrive just for their own sake and safety. Um, so I'll, I'll start the discussion with that.
Okay. Yeah, Jim.
To be, to be clear on where the state is, there's, there's still a stay-at-home order at the, at the state executive order level. So that's a stay-at-home. Uh, that is, uh, from appearances likely to be lifted in phase one. But then there is a, uh, a quarantine in place for, uh, for, for 14 days for anyone that comes into Rhode Island from out of state. So as it stands right now, there is still a stay-at-home order for anybody in Rhode Island. You're allowed to do essentially four things, medical, food, work, and exercise adjacent to where you live. That's still in effect now. And then, uh, our expectation is at the, uh, throughout phase one, um, significant restriction on travel and in effect that, uh, 14-day quarantine for people coming in from out of state. I agree with Chris that for both, um, kind of, uh, education and understanding and, um, which is, I think is most of what enforcement really is. And then the enforcement, I think, aligning with the state, uh, uh, is in, uh, Block Island's interest also as it relates to providing the, the, um, the certifications and, and people power to prepare for, uh, the season, maybe a month or six weeks out.
Right. Sven Riesem?
Um, I, uh, so we, this, this section of the ordinance was modified by Kathy, uh, based on, like we talked about earlier, a number of the things in the framework, which includes office workers, things like that. Everybody on this list is, is allowed to be, and more are allowed to be, um, working within the state. So it's not like we're, we are more restricted than the state and that's, uh, being maintained currently in this section. Uh, the, the only difference of what Jim just said, to make sure everybody's clear on, is people out of state workers. So if you're a worker from Connecticut or Massachusetts, you are able to come into the state, uh, under the current shelter-at-home, um, process and the quarantine process from the governor. If you're a visitor, you have to quarantine. So there's just a, a minor difference there. If, if the group would like to really consider going to the state, uh, effective now or soon, um, this would take out nine, in my opinion. And we would just go with the governor and the state, um, uh, regulations, uh, of which we're actually not very far away from. We've been walking that way and, and it would, to the chief and to the interim town manager's letters, it would clean up a lot of the, um, questions around enforcement. We may want to spend a minute checking out what those differences are, but, uh, the intent of these changes to section nine were to get closer to the state, but yet maintain the Block Island quarantine. And that would be the big change if we went to the state.
Chris Willie?
So it's important to differentiate, and Jim touched on it, that the out-of-state quarantine is still in effect, um, everywhere in Rhode Island. And that's probably going to be in effect for, um, five to six weeks. We're looking at maybe beginning of June, mid-June, that that will be lifted, but that's going to be dependent on numbers from Connecticut and Massachusetts. So that's a moving target. Um, to Sven's point, I think number nine should stay specifically to the transient workforce and restricted activities because it enables the town to monitor and, um, you know, there's a registration process involved, which I think is going to be important. And I think businesses are willing to do that. So I don't think it's necessary to eliminate that entire section. Um, you know, that's called, you know, we, we can call it restricted activities for, you know, the commuting workforce. And this is specifically put in here.
Right.
Allow trades to come out and, um.
Right. And the wording is restricted activities as opposed to essential activities.
Right. So I guess the first two paragraphs you can strike and keep from where it starts, only transient workers or something to that effect. I mean, I know you, we get the intent. That's, the intent is to, uh, allow that, if I, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. Okay.
But keep in, you know, Rhode Island shelter-in-place order, um, is still in effect, follow CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines. Transient workers may commute who are engaged in restricted activities provided that the transient workers are restricted as follows. And then it gives you the bullets. Um.
Right. And within the bullet, within the bullets, the CDC, Department of Health guidelines and that sort of thing are mentioned. So Martha, did you have something?
Yes. Does this technically give, I mean, right now, I think technically we have virtually no latitude in going to the mainland for, um, or going to the mainland and coming back and not having to quarantine, that we, the people who live here. And, uh, is that going to be gone with eliminating the first paragraph here?
Um, yes.
I mean, I know people aren't doing it. I think it's also unenforceable. Um, but if I, if I go over to the stopping shop and come back, which I, I know I'm not a good example, but theoretically, if I were to go to the stopping shop and come back, would I have to quar, if we remove this, would I have to quarantine for 14 days?
Catherine, can you answer that?
No, you would not.
But if I went to Connecticut, I would.
Uh, that would be under the state, um, under the state rules. You would, unless you will come into Rhode Island for work.
Okay. Well, that's, well, yeah, that's kind of, and we can all say that.
Well, well, that's what the governor's order is.
I know. I'm only talking about if I left here and came back. I'm talking about, I don't want the people who are coming over here to work to have more flexibility than the people who live here and have been trying so hard to keep everything, um, keep the lid on everything for so long. And I, and also I think, I'm also looking at it from a practical, enforceable point of view. And keeping it in line with the state.
Ben?
Um, Kathy, can you confirm whether the, what I'm about to say or, or edit or confirm what I'm about to say? If we were to Chris's point, keep, uh, the, the line about, or the whole section about folks coming over here and having to register, which is, you know, Jen's done a great job on. Um.
Jen has done a great job.
Yeah, we would in essence, then, uh, the big changes in here would be that what is currently mentioned in nine is this office worker. So for example, I'm just making sure we're all clear on this, you know, real estate agents can't go to work. Uh, uh, bookkeepers, you know, unless they're at home, can't go to an office. So following the governor, which actually I'm in support of, um, we would be able to do that. A construction crew, the way we have that laid out under the work activities, um, you're only allowed to have one or two folks on the site. This would allow to the governor's five or social and or social distancing and everything else. So the big, uh, changes, uh, would be that, that our worker activity would expand a bit in the sense of numbers of people on a site, all socially distancing governor, following the governor's guidelines. And that pretty much office workers, uh, could go to work. Uh, and it would take a lot of the onus off of Block Island, to Martha's point, as far as enforcement. And I think that we maintain the restricted activities, uh, in order to, uh, make sure that people from the mainland register. So yes.
Were you looking for feedback from Kathy on that?
Yep. Kathy, is that all true?
It's a lot of it.
Well, it, yeah. I mean, the reason restricted activities are in there was to make a cutout for people who would otherwise have to quarantine.
And, and in essence, that's not going to happen, uh, anymore. They're registering and they can come and go if they are working on a HVAC, but, um, but we really don't have any more limitations on quote-unquote worker activities and/or the proposed office workers.
Correct. The, the issue is going to be now, before, like I said, it was a cutout from the self-quarantine requirements. Now we're going to have to start defining a transient worker.
Chris Willie?
I think, um, number nine, um, kind of turns into specific to the commuting workforce, which is why it was designed in the first place. Um, and, you know, office workers. I, I've never, I, I, you know, I think that term was more in line with applicable to the mainland. I mean, what's our office building? Town Hall, right?
No, it's real.
Right. Well, real estate offices, the, the governor is, is given a, um, this would fall under prosper, I think the shelter in place, right? So office workers come into play when shelter in place is lifted. Okay?
No, which ostensibly it'd be Friday.
Right. So why have it in here if it's going to get lifted?
Office workers on the mainland can be in their office on Block Island, for example. A bookkeeper, if they go to an office, they can't be, that, that's not allowed on Block Island currently.
Right. So.
A real estate agent cannot work in their office currently.
So why don't we just say get in line with the state and strike the whole thing?
Uh, that's what I think, or that's what I tried to just say.
I mean, all of nine, I think, should be focused on, um, the transient workforce and just facilitating, I'm not going to say restricting it, just keeping tabs on it. So we know what entities are working where and, and, because we're trying to work with these businesses because they need to get open. They're going to let it, we also need to get their, their rooming licenses and inspections and things of that nature. And it's going to take a while. Um, and this is just the restricted activities. You can list out everything if you'd like. Um, I don't know if it's necessary because what's, what is going to be restricted by the state moving forward after the ninth? Anything?
Ken? Ken? Jim?
Tim. Karen? I, yeah, I think we're getting to the, to the, to the real crux of it here. If I'm one of these. If I work in one of these entities and I live in, in Narragansett, for example. I'm not required to quarantine when I come to work. So as, as Kathy was saying, we were making exceptions to the quarantine. If the quarantine is no longer required for somebody from Rhode Island and the quarantine only applies for somebody from out of state. You could require a registration for somebody from out of state. Or I think the other, the other possibly operative constraint would be. The, the limit on the number of people in a crew. So. Let us know how many people are in your crew. But if I'm a single person and I'm coming over here to work in, in a list that now for us lists about 30 things. And I'm not required to quarantine. It seems to me, as Chris and Sven have gotten to. It, it renders most of this unnecessary if we're aligning with the state. I think what's left is we want somebody with a large construction firm to, to understand that the constraint. And I've had conversations with construction firms that do work out here and also on the mainland. And they are operating under a five person constraint on the site. If somebody else walks up, they reduce somebody at the site. So I think we're, I think we're, as, as far as I know, the state is, is still operating on that five. It may be going to 10. That's the only application for the, the registration that I see. Otherwise, I think there's, there's going to be some difficulty getting people to register when, when, if we align with the state, they'd be allowed to come here to work.
I think it's also going to create a problem in terms of the workload for, you know, Jen Brady's been doing a great job in terms of, of keeping things registered and everything else. And she's been, her phone's been ringing off the hook. I think it's going to create a problem if everyone, everyone has to, has to do that. So if we're going to do that, if we're going to go that route, we're going to have to increase the manpower in order to be able to deal with that. I think Sven first, then Chris.
No, no, sorry.
All right, Chris, go ahead.
This is all important in an eye towards safety, though. I mean, that's why I'd like to keep some type of process in where, I mean, that's, that's kind of the crux of it. So we, it's, it's so we know who's coming over and, and who's working where. When it comes to the off-island entities, we can eliminate if the workload is an issue. We can eliminate the necessity for island crews to register with, with, with the building department and the land use department. Because they've all been here for, for locked up for two months, basically. All right, where, where, and, and get in line with the state with the work crew as well. And shift the focus towards. Working with the, the, the commuting workforce on an eye towards safety. That's the point of it is, is the eye towards safety. Because we've list some of the safety requirements that we would like. And I'm sure the state has their own requirements. So that's, that's the thought process behind that.
Yeah, and some of, some of those, some of those safety issues, I mean, I, I wanted to address too. And, and one of them was the, we had put in originally a traveling, traveling to and from the job site together. We had said something about one person per vehicle, but I think that's not practical. And we need to, that needs to be lessened, lightened up on. Because I mean, if you have, that's just not practical, not everybody owns a vehicle. And, and, and it's unsafe to have people driving in the back of the trucks. It's safer to be in the cab. So as long as they're wearing masks, I think it's, you know, proper protocols and. Sven, go ahead.
I, in trying to get some, I think we're all, although maybe Andre wants to chime in or, or Martha more. Based on the conversation so far, it sounds like nine. We should rewrite to focus on. However, you want to call it, Kathy said transient workers come to the island just to register so we know. And then pretty well eliminate a lot of it because it's all going to fall then, all the rest of it falls into the state doctrines. And I think that's a rewrite of nine, which would be great. But I want to then make sure that both everybody on the phone and all of us realize then. Car, you know, we, the sidewalk project will could, could is a key word, start back up with five guys, you know, if they're registered. Or the town properties or whatever projects that might have been in the past held off. Assuming that they fit the guidelines for. For Jen, they, they could start back up if we go that direction to align with the state. I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Yes, as long as they align with the state, like you said, I mean, if they have a crew coming from Connecticut, though, they're going to have to quarantine.
Workers don't have to quarantine.
Right.
Not with the state. That's why they should at least. That's why it's important that they at least register.
Yep, I agree with Chris.
I mean, I'm, I honestly, I, I'm not necessarily all on board with this, but it, it's got to happen at some point here. And we have to do it while we still have a little bit of control over it. And I think the registration processes, businesses are willing to do that. And I think we ought to take advantage of the willingness to work with the town. And this is all again towards an eye towards safety. So if a Connecticut plumber is coming over to work at a business and they register, we know that a Connecticut plumber is here working on a business. That we know. I don't think that's, it's, it's, the unknown is what we, we, we don't, we, we don't want, I guess.
Okay, can I, can we back up? I, I missed something because we jumped, and this is a sentiment that happened before that I found really frustrating. We, we jumped over if shelter in place is lifted, does that mean people can work in offices?
People on the mainland can work in offices now within shelter in place. For example, real estate agent can work in an office.
Well, can that, I guess, I guess my, my question is, because it sort of got dismissed like the town was the only office, which is not true. And is, was that clarified? I, it just seemed like we, it just seems like everything here is completely about people coming in. And I just want to be sure we're not bypassing the local people who have been behaving so well.
It's lumped into the same article, Martha, which is why it's a little bit confusing because it is two different topics. So I think we can address that. Or we did address it by striking anything that's associated specifically to. Office workers or anything like that, because it is currently permitted with, within certain parameters. So we don't need to include it in this number nine.
Okay, I just want to be sure that's clear.
Yeah, I think number nine should just focus on. The registration process for commuting workforce.
Those would, that would, that would be restricted activities, quote unquote.
Correct.
Hey, Ken?
Yeah, go ahead.
Kathy, could you please? Kathy Marola, could you please just clarify for everybody on the state side? Obviously, shelter in places, you should stay home unless it's essential or critical. And I just want to make sure that we're all clear that, you know, look, if a real estate agent is trying to show a house on the mainland. They're able to go unlock that house, walk away, you know, let the people walk in, et cetera. I, I just want to make sure we have the facts on the table. Could you help me with that?
That's my understanding. But, but I just want to make it clear again that under the state rule, it doesn't matter where you're coming from. You can work, you can come to an island to work. Doesn't matter where you're coming from.
Yes, but what about the difference if you're, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there a difference between? If you're coming to Rhode Island to work for the day and then going home back to your home state? As opposed to if you're coming to Rhode Island to stay for five days?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, that was my, that was my point, work crews coming out here is they're going to have to, they need to understand that if their workers are coming and they're staying for five days, they would have to quarantine. They can't just, they can't just come to the island and go ahead and go to work.
That would be under the state rule.
There we go.
So I, I actually have a question about that.
Go ahead, Chris.
I don't know if that's valid, Ken, and I'll give you an example. My sister works in Rhode Island, but lives in Massachusetts. I'm sorry, lives in Rhode Island, works in Massachusetts. And she has to do a seven day stint in, in the medical profession. She doesn't have to quarantine when she comes back in Rhode Island.
Essential personnel.
So.
She's, she's essential personnel, she's in the medical profession.
So. Construction's not essential personnel? This is, I'm just saying that clarification, that's.
Yeah, I know, Kathy, can you, do you have any clarification?
I'm going to have to go back and look at the order, I don't have it in front of me. It's my understanding that if you're not one of the essentials, and I have to go back to look at the order to see what that listing is, because things have been changing. That if you just come to Rhode Island to work or DEM just open it up to work on boats, you can come, but you're supposed to go right back and not make stops in between.
So basically, we're, we're going to start following what the governor and the state are doing versus being a little, a little different, the 39th difference.
Ken? All right, Jim, go ahead.
What Kathy described, that, that, this was a, this was a kind of a major issue when they first stopped, when the governor first tried. The rule would have precluded somebody from driving from Seaconk into East Providence to work. So the rule was you can come to work and that's, and that's the other way too. If I live in East Providence, I can go into Seaconk. But I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm just supposed to go to work, I'm not supposed to do other things as I go back and forth. Somebody coming out here for five days to work who's come from Massachusetts, for example. I don't know that that's, I haven't heard it discussed and I, and I don't know that it's called out in the, it's, and the state, the state of Rhode Island has a stay at home order, not a shelter in place order, I believe. And, and it does allow for work, as Sven was describing. It's, it's not completely clear what the requirement would be for somebody five days. But I think they would be allowed to just go to where they're working here. I would expect they could go to where they were staying, oftentimes would be the same, and then return to the state they came from.
Well, well, it might not be the same, though. I mean, if they're, if they're working on a road or working on a house or something like that, they're probably staying at a hotel. So. That would be problematic, or they're probably staying at another, another location.
Well, under the governor's order, any person coming to Rhode Island from another state for a non-work related purpose has to immediately self-quarantine. Unless you're in public health, public safety, healthcare. If you're coming to Rhode Island to work, you can do that, but you're required to go right back at the end of the day. And it is a stay at home, not a shelter in place order.
Okay, so, so I guess, but let's just take this specific. You have a crew coming out to work on, let's just say, the example, work on the road. And they are bringing out, you know, the crews coming out and they're going to have to stay someplace other than in the road, obviously. And they're coming, let's say the workers are coming from out of state. Would they, would, would those workers have to quarantine first before they could work?
Based on the exact language of the governor's order, no. You have to quarantine if you come for a non-work related activity.
Questions or comments, the council?
A question or a statement, I guess, question is, we can, we can proceed one of two ways. We can. Well, a suggestion would be take what has been put in the ordinance, which includes work activities, the restricted work activities, et cetera. And then spend a few days really understanding the differences and all the answers to these questions. Or we can move to the state now. To Chris's, to everybody's comments, I think we're moving there. I think the enforcement says we should move there. I think the governor's put a whole lot of work into this, and I think we are one of the most conservative states, so I think it's all good. The question just gets to be, do we want to do that? We need to do something before Friday or for, before expires. So either we go to the state on all this except the off-island workers that should register, and that's really what nine becomes. Or we stick with it and then modify it after the governor. It's, it's sort of an either or right now in my mind.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
Did we discuss? We discussed the. Single people are being people driving in cars and, you know. One person per car, did we discuss increasing work crews to be in line with the state from two to five?
I think.
We're not there yet, are we?
Well, I think Sven already mentioned that if we, that that's the way it is, that's the way it would be if we went to the state, did you not, Sven?
I, that is where the states act, they're at five.
Right.
All right, so everything after. All persons on Block Island are encouraged to conduct restricted activities by themselves in order that minimal contact exposure may be achieved. Starting from that sentence.
That's on page five.
Yeah, it is all the way.
To the end.
To the end is struck.
And it would fall within the guidelines of the state. That is, that is a good motion to put on the table.
And Kathy, you are going to get clarification on the out of state. Worker conundrum? Did I understand that right?
I, I shall. But let me ask you a question. We have only transient workers may commute to Block Island who are engaged in restricted activities. So we're going to totally omit restricted activities, it's just people coming to work here. Is that what I'm hearing?
I. I am indifferent on whether or not you want to, for, for this section, if you want to keep the restricted activities in there or not. I don't know how it correlates with the state. You know, I don't think even, I don't even think the state has this much of a comprehensive list, to be honest with you.
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking is if we eliminated everything below, you know, minimum contact exposure may be achieved, then we eliminate the definition of restricted activities, which is fine if that's what the council's policy is and that's what you want to do.
Well, there's only. Actually, I think that section. Is, is important to, I don't know, I'm going to, I'll defer to Jim on this because he's the one that's going to field all the calls. But there is one, one sentence in there that shouldn't be in there. And that's the food establishment clause that I think that needs to be struck out of that entire. Section. I don't know how we can even legally do this, keep, keep, keep a food establishment closed while others are open. So I'd like to strike that at the very least. But everything else. Everything else in restricted activities. If that would assist. Jim and land use registration, building department, I'm fine with it. But I want to strike. The takeout food from establishments that were open anytime during the period, January 2nd, 2020 through April 2020. I, I didn't agree with it before, I still don't agree with it, and I honestly don't know how it's even legal.
Second.
So you're, you're, I mean, if you're taking, wait a minute, I mean, if you're taking everything out, that's going to be included in what you're taking out?
No, he's saying keep all of the, the words, the definitions of, at the paragraph, the term restricted, except for.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
Lines eight and, was that seven and eight or whatever the, about the restaurant? I agree, so but, since you need that paragraph, if you're going to actually have the paragraph that says only transient workers engaged in restricted activities, you are now defining the restricted activities.
And I'm, I'm fine with keeping it in there, keeping that paragraph in there if it's, if it assists the town manager and staff in determining and keeping track of that, that workforce. I'm fine with that, but I do want to strike the words after takeout food. Which are from establishments that were open at any time during the period, January 2nd, 2020 through April 11th, 2020.
Okay.
And I believe Andre seconded Chris's motion, motion.
All right. Molly, do you have a clarification on that motion? Do you have that motion?
No, I'd like to hear it again, please.
All right.
Is you are you only taking out that one section?
No, Martha, not yet.
Can you restate the motion, please?
My motion was specific to the paragraph um, that starts the term restricted activities. Um, I would like to remove from that paragraph for one, two, three, four, five, six lines down after takeout food. It says from establishments that were open at any time during the period January second, two thousand twenty through April eleventh, two thousand twenty. I would like to strike that, those words from this whole paragraph, and then we can move on to what else can be struck.
All right. And Andre seconded.
I I believe, I'm sorry, Chris, but I believe your your proposal also struck everything after then the term self-quarantine, blah, 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 that below that restricted activity paragraph. I thought you sort of killed everything down, and then we just brought that stuff back up.
Well, yeah, I I want to.
You're jumping all over the place.
I would like to focus on that first and then move down.
Okay.
Okay.
The motion on the floor is to remove the word sale and purchase of takeout food from establishments that were open at any time during the period January second, twenty twenty through April eleventh, twenty twenty. Andre seconded it. Any further discussion?
Line of order. I don't think.
Oh, Molly, I'm sorry.
I don't think that's the motion. I think the motion is to remove the words from establishments that were open at any time during the period January second, twenty twenty through April eleventh, twenty twenty.
That is correct.
I stand corrected. Thank you. Any further discussion?
On that.
Andre, go ahead.
All right, so we've been talking about this for quite some time now. Um, and I've been listening.
You seconded it.
Hmm, well, about that item. Um, the thing about, you know, removing the quarantine, the shelter in place, basically essentially move removing nine.
No, hold hold up. Wait, wait a minute. What are we talking about?
Martha? Andre.
I thought there was a motion on the floor only to remove the uh, the date.
Yes, there was. Andre, are you are you referring to that, to the motion to remove the date?
No.
Okay, can you can you hold that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion, uh, Andre?
Aye.
Uh, Chris Willie?
Aye.
Ben Reason?
Aye.
Martha Ball?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries five to none. Andre, you have the floor.
No, go ahead. I I'm go ahead. I'm good.
Okay. You want to make another motion? Go ahead.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Can I make a point? Can the motion include changing the word essential to restricted?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Martha, and that's the same paragraph.
I'm sorry, the motion did not include that. The motion was simply for the takeout of food, uh, establishments that were open anytime from whatever. It was just a date that that date thing.
I'll make a motion to change the term restricted or essential to restricted through this portion of the ordinance.
Only this portion?
Only this portion. I don't know where else it is.
Well.
I don't know it's what.
It continues on into the shelter in place discussion and um. Okay, do you want to? Do you want to deal with the uh, the added um, restricted activities at the end of paragraph?
Is that a question to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, hold on, I'm trying to.
Okay.
Scrolling down.
Those are in red also.
Um, the office workers subsection?
No, no, the same paragraph that the term restricted activities appears in.
Oh, the that was a question I had for, um, if it helps in in administering this, I don't I don't have an objection to keeping the activities listed in in there. I don't know how many would apply to uh, farming and agriculture, commercial fishing, lobstering and shellfishing. I think we're all specific to um, Block Island activity, you know, Block Islanders activities. But I'm I'm not, I'm not proposing striking anything out of that if it helps the town manager and staff administer the um, the the registration process.
Ken? Andre, Sven.
Uh, I'm sorry, Chris, on the, I think, I think the question is the term, the paragraph that says the term restricted activities. If that at the bottom of that paragraph, it talks about water testing, radon testing, blah, 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 right, about about four lines?
Yeah. I don't have a problem with keeping that in if it helps, again, administer.
That was your question.
It's not keeping it in, it'll be adding it.
Yes, so I.
I'm comfortable adding it, yeah.
So I second Chris's motion, which, to be clear, is changing the word from essential to restricted and adding in the four lines of definition at the bottom of that paragraph. I can read them if we need.
Excuse me, are we are we including, are we switching essential uh, to restricted all through this section?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just make that clear because it's not just in this paragraph.
Yes, it's clear throughout the whole document. So I second Chris. That's what it was.
Okay. So let's clarify the motion again, please.
Um, the motion was to change the term essential to restricted throughout the document and add in this paragraph water testing, radon testing, water filter maintenance, personal property, moving real estate and other appraising, legal, medical and accounting and or engineering consulting, real estate, selling, leasing, delivering of ordered goods, inspecting installation of sprinkler systems, fire suppression, plumbing, HVAC and electrical systems.
Okay, and seconded was by Sven?
Uh, yes.
Is this, I just have a question for Jim. Is which I probably should have asked or had answered before I made the motion, but is this with this, is this helpful to have this in here for you?
Uh, to to the extent that we uh, that that the council wants to retain this registration, and it sounds like they do, I I I I've already said, I think there's a I I'm I'm a little, I'm a little bit cloudy on what what we're what we're allowing an exception from, because I think I I think the answer's gonna come back based on the the other communities uh, and and interaction between the states. I think the answer's gonna come back that if you're coming here for work, you're you're allowed to come here and go back to where you came from if you just go to work. So I think for the purposes of right now, if we are gonna continue our registration, um, I think having that list is is pretty much a requirement, because otherwise it's it's um, it's it's not defined. The other, the other alternative would be under the discretion of the town manager or the or the building official. So as it stands now, I think we should leave it in. Um, and then I've got a couple other questions if we can get back to it on section nine that are above where where you are right now, but you guys got to work on this motion first.
All right. Thank you.
You want to continue, you working on that motion?
Uh, I just did. I I it was seconded, but you could call the motion.
Uh, Ken stepped away. I'm not sure where he is if I'm in charge of this right now, but okay. Um, just repeat that for me, sorry.
Um, the motion was to change the term essential to restricted activities and throughout the document and include the additional um, the additional activities under this subsection that are in red.
Okay. Um, so you seconded that motion. I have a question on that. Um, so activities such as um, fire inspections and whatnot, has that been discussed? Um, I had a call from an insurance agent. Well, you know, people's people need their insurance, uh, people before they open will need their um, sprinkler systems inspected. And um, people usually come out to do that. So during um, you know, so I'm just wondering if that's included. I know uh, if restaurants are gonna start opening, some of them need hoods cleaned, um, and they need their um, their um, their fire suppression systems inspected on a yearly basis. Um, is that is that activity included in here? Sven, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just say the word, Chris read him before, uh, inspecting slash installing a regular sprinkler systems, comma, fire systems, comma, plumbing, comma, HVAC, comma, and electrical systems are now included in this work. So that in essence, all of those things, and there's others, um, all of those allow the establishments to get up to speed so that the minimum housing inspector can come in.
Okay, uh, can somebody turn their phone off, whoever's got that dinging? Ken, as he's gone. All right, Jim, you indicated you wanted to go back to something in number nine.
Can you call the motion?
Yeah, all right. Okay, go ahead. Sven?
Yes.
Chris? Chris?
Yes.
Martha?
Aye.
Aye, and aye, aye, motion passes. Uh, Ken, I guess, sustains. Uh, Jim, do you want to go back and talk about and mention what you want to say?
Well, yes, thank you. Um, top of page five, the the bullet that this would be an addition that I don't believe has been addressed. Workers who are required to spend the night for work purposes must follow self-quarantine requirements. Uh, such workers go directly to and from respective work locations. We just talked about it, but we didn't add it in. And and we might want to wait, pretend to come back to see was however you guys want to do that. But now I'm gonna go back to page four.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna work from the bottom of the page up. Or or I can start from number nine down. The first paragraph in number nine ends with the words making any stops. The the next sentence is all residents full-time or seasonal must shelter in place.
Yep.
In order to align with the state, that would no longer be the case. If that's been taken care of, and I missed it, then then so then, okay, but I want, I want to make sure that whatever the council is attempting to do is actually being done.
Well, thank you for bringing that up because um, that's what I was, that's what I wanted to go back to. I'm not, I was unclear as to what we're doing with that because all residents full and seasonal, I mean, I think that's what we're trying to kind of lighten up on, and I I'm just speaking from my own personal interpretation of what the discussion has been. Is I think that that was um, what we were trying to lighten up on, because quite frankly, people coming here and going right now have more uh, more opportunity for movement than the people that actually have been living here. So um, I mean, I'm fine with dropping that, but when we started talking about um, you know, do we want to be in line with the state, you know? My concern is that there are still Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, you know, there's still huge hotspots. Um, and it's not in line with the state to stop. I mean, to stop uh, workers coming from those places. But I think from what I was hearing earlier was that we're going to allow them, and we're going to allow them to stay here for quite some time uh, to come out and work. I could be wrong from what I was hearing, but um, I'm not sure I'm on board with that. So um, is that what you're referencing? It's like, to be clear?
That's right. Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
I I I think, um, yeah, so I think if if we align with the state, um, we would need to fall under the self-quarantine requirements that apply to anybody coming here for non-work, which would still be fourteen days. I understand the way Kathy does, which is for work, you're allowed to work. Um, I think you would also uh, self-quarantine for the period of time you're here and then and then uh, leave the island. Um, so we're really talking two different things. That's the top of page five. Uh, and and the second paragraph of number nine is to, and and I and I don't believe this was in any of the motions, although I think we, I think you kind of talked, the council talked about it. Uh, a- and and I think there's a consensus about it, but we need to make the motion if we're um, if we're gonna remove the shelter in place requirement for people who have been here uh, and aligned with the state. I think Chris's motion um, unless I misunderstood, primarily dealt with the restricted activities, because that's what he was trying to get to.
Right, and while I uh, got the train of thought going here, um, you know, I agree, we are trying to be um, in, uh, it's much easier for us for enforcement and any other thing to to be in line with the state. However, you know, we are unique uh, from the state. And um, like people, like I said, like people go home, people come in here for work, they get to go home. Uh, if they're coming here from Block Island, they're not going home. Um, so if we are allowing people to come from out of state to Block Island to do construction activities that aren't, you know, gonna be um, you know, that aren't gonna be here for just a day or two to get something done. Um, they, I I just, I'm not sure I'm on board with that quarantine not being in place. Uh, because we, and then what we we're going to, a lot of these constructions sites are construction crews have to rent a house. They have to stay somewhere, so we don't know where that is. So I think we're gonna get in a situation where we're gonna have to start lifting the um, you know, the the rental thing for these folks. And what do we, I think we're gonna get into a situation where we're gonna lift them for construction people, but not for renters. I don't know, I could be completely wrong, but that's the way I'm seeing this right now. And I don't know, I open that, I just want to discuss that, you know? Anybody?
Chris Willie?
No, Andre has a good point. Um, the mechanism that it would only be allowable is if they came and left the same day, which is in it, which is in um, compliance with the state. And that was my point. The second part of it is um, and I I know Jim said it earlier as well, but you know, is what it, what in the event these entities or these contractors have to come over and stay for a few days, um, would that be in violation of the state? And I thought we asked to get clarification on that. Did Jim, did you give us clarification? Or Kathy, you gave us clarification that that would be, they would have to quarantine?
Yeah, they would have to quarantine when they're not working.
Right, so it's when they're not working, that's that's kind of like, that's where we're at. Um, I I I I uh, Andre made a good point, so we can focus this discussion around that. Um, and I don't really know how to uh, uh, address it.
Well, the way, the way to address it is to say that if they're coming from out of state is what Kathy's saying is legal now. If they're coming from out of state, they're coming to the island, they're doing a job, they're quarantining on the job, and then they're leaving on the end boat at the end of the day, that's one thing. But if they're coming to the island with the intention of staying multiple days, they have to quarantine, just like they were a visitor. And they wouldn't be able to, you know, work and that sort of thing. They'd have to quarantine. So I think that would be, that would keep things in in check.
Then we can get to the enforcement of that.
Well, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's the way Kathy answered. I I think, I think I think the distinction is you are, you are to quarantine when you're not working. So you're allowed to come to work. And if you uh, for whatever reason have to stay, you would have to quarantine, uh, which is to say you're not allowed to go do other things. You're allowed to work, you're allowed to leave another state, come into the state of Rhode Island to work. That's what the governor has said. You work, but then you'd have to, then you'd have to quarantine in some place. And and that and and that is going to require an adjustment, as Andre says, to um, to allowing people to stay here, but that's another thing that that is going to align with the state um, with the with the state approach. Um, and that is to allow people and to put the onus on the the property owners and those who would bring workers over, which is where we'd be going in the next, in the next phase, likely, that those who would bring people over, put the onus on them to make sure that they have uh, plans and and approaches that would allow them to have people come over. But in the near term, we're talking about registering people that come over either from out of state or not, if they're off island, so that we know where they are, so that we know if they're from out of state, we know where they are and where they're staying and and um, and what they're working on, so to speak. I think it's a little bit different to enforce that, that than it is a, uh, a state, um, uh, emergency order, an executive order. But the executive order does apply to some of those people. It applies to the out of state people. And we can have that educational conversation and enforcement conversation relative to the state, the, the governor's executive order for people coming from out of state. We can have it when they first sign up and we can make sure that, um, they know that, that that's something we're paying attention to.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you for that, Jim. But that leaves us with what as a council we want to do. Um, and I, I think what we're looking to do right now is to alleviate the burden of locals not being able to leave. So, um, I don't know. I just, do we want, are we opening that up? And then the problem is, is like, you know, again, they're going to have to stay. Now, could we do that with construction people that could stay on the, on the, on the job site? Um, where they're working? Or are we going to open up the rentals again? So I, I, I don't know that. I, I want clarification on all of that before I vote on dropping any of that. Or do we want to do something?
Martha, go ahead.
What if somebody, um, had rented a house for their crew?
Right.
And they left and they didn't, they couldn't come back? Would they be able to now since they have a place to stay?
Chris Willie?
Martha has a good point. Um, would it be? Would it be more cumbersome or appropriate? Because Andre's point is the first part of this number nine is restricting to Block Island, um, residents. So the first two paragraphs in number nine, I think was proposed, it was never made a motion to, to strike that entire, those two paragraphs, which would then enable, um, Block Island residents to go off island and follow all the, the state's shelter in place, um, guidelines and not have to quarantine when they return. So striking the first two paragraphs would allow that travel to happen. Right now, it's a, it's, you have to quarantine when you get back from an off island trip. Then the rest of this, um, the, the next few paragraphs are specific to the restricted workforce, which was, um, was to enable commercial businesses to open. And I'm, my question is, would it be better for us to specify that? That distinction, commercial versus residential, because Martha had a good point of, yeah, there's, there, I mean, there's crews out here that are working on residence, uh, residences that are from out of state possibly and need to rent a house. Well, that wouldn't be allowed because we, that, that section of that right now, um, we haven't gotten to it, but that isn't allowed right now. So they wouldn't be able to rent the house. All right, so.
Well, actually, I, Chris, excuse me, I asked if they had, they had already rented a house. I'm actually asking a really specific case that I know of.
Okay, um, but commercial entities that have the ability for these people to quarantine on site on the, on the property and their commercial, can you, can you entertain that as a, as a distinction? I, I'm just throwing it out there because, uh, Andre has a good point. But if you want to narrow the off island workforce specifically to commercial properties, um, can you do it? And is, and is it something that we want to entertain?
If, if I could, I think, I think, all right, go ahead, Sven.
Nope.
I, again, we, we, we've kind of agreed that aligning with the state creates simplicity and, and, and enforceability and just understanding on the part of the people that are, are trying to comply with what we're, what we're trying to communicate. Uh, real quickly, again, there's still a stay, a stay at home order in Rhode Island right now and will be until the governor lifts it. We expect it to, but it, it isn't lifted until it is. And, and, and there is a limitation to five people working on a crew. I think the approach of retaining the registration program and then abiding by what the state requires of workers coming from out of state and then what the state requires of workers coming from in-state. Um, and allowing that to be the rule that, that we, we're working from, from this point forward or clear or, or quickly after this, if we want some clarification and to reconvene next week to, to execute it. And, um, to the first two paragraphs, I, I didn't want to move past that without the council making a motion because I think the consensus is to essentially, um, strike those such that people would still be under the stay at home order until they're not. But the shelter in place that has been imposed by, by Block Island would no longer apply if those two paragraphs are, are stricken. We're really talking about two things. We might want to do one so we can get it out of the way, which is the people coming and going, uh, who live here and have lived here and have done such a great job. Um, and then you might want to move on to how are you going to handle out of state people who, who come in to Block Island to work? And my advice would be do it the way the rest of the state is doing it. Uh, and, and we are asking for something in addition to that, which is to register with us so we can pay attention and make sure people understand what those rules really are.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I think my, I think my confusion was, and my question was, and you know, I'm, I'm actually kind of getting clarity in my own question as you speak, and thank you for that. But, um, like, you know, if we follow the state's rules of workers coming in and out of state, I guess what I'm saying is that, um, when you come to work on Block Island, you can't go home. So it's the rental house, it's the rental. Are we opening those up or are they still, or it, or what you're saying is they still leave that day?
They, to me, they either leave that day or they have some kind of other acceptable arrangement under the other constraints that, that we've arranged. And I think we have to start working on, uh, you know, what the, as you say, the, the rental constraints. But I think, I think, I think the people coming out here can probably, I can't speak for them, but they can probably work under that, um, that constraint for the, the time being, um, such that they can start getting stuff out here, getting prepared. And then we can, um, we can, we can make some more clarification on, on the rental. Um, but for right now, I think there are, as, as Martha points out, places that do have arrangements that would be acceptable. They're, they're not boarding houses, they're not breaking another part of our ordinance or estate rule. Um, and the, and the, the basic application, because you need to be able to, Mark and Jen and, and I have to be able to apply it is we're applying the state rule, you come here for work, you're allowed to work, you have to quarantine when you're not at work. And then you need to leave the island and go back to wherever it is, whatever state, whether it's Rhode Island, Connecticut, Massachusetts, whatever it is.
Okay. So, for purposes of this discussion today, um,
Andre, go ahead.
So purposes of this discussion today, where, how do we get to, you know, allowing the local population to be able to have freely more travel? Without, um, kind of, you know, throwing the door open right now today. Um, because I agree, and I think you're probably saying that in so many words, and what you said was that, um, you know, people have come to us with, um, proposals where they want to come out with their crew and work on a job site and stay in a different piece of property on that job site. Um, and so essentially work while they're quarantining. And I don't think that is a bad idea because I think the, uh, our intent is to keep people that have been away from Block Island and coming here away from the general population. And I think that fits the bill. So my question is, is, you know, how do we, you know, where are we with that? I mean, like this whole nine here is, I don't know, I just kind of, I mean, you know what I'm trying, you know where I'm, you know what I'm feeling about it? I just don't know how to put it into words and make a motion on it. And, um, that's where I'm at and I'm looking for assistance with that from everybody else.
Hold on, Chris. Sven Reason?
Um, I, I'm going to try and do what Andre just asked, and I think we, we've been feeding on this one. And, uh, it's a really good discussion. So, um, nine was intended all about workers.
Yep.
I just want to make sure everybody in the audience realizes the governor still has all the restrictions on recreational travel. Uh, don't see that going away. Um, and so this isn't about a person recreating from some other state into the state. They have to quarantine. My recommendation and my motion is on number nine, eliminate paragraph one, starting with anyone arriving and eliminate the second paragraph, all residents, um, must shelter in place. Eliminate those two paragraphs. Therefore, this will fit within the state, uh, guidelines. We keep everything that Chris just laid out, we voted on as far as the next few paragraphs. But then after Ken, after the, uh, electrical systems, the, the definitions of restricted activities, we eliminate all the rest of nine because they will then fall within the state. We do not need to talk about outside activities or work activities or, or office workers because now we're fitting within the state, uh, which is a shelter in place. That means that they, people should stay home unless they have to be in their office, but they can be. So that, that's my motion.
Second.
Um, motion by Chris, seconded by, uh, on, uh, no, motion by Sven, seconded by Chris, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Uh, can I, I have a question. This is Kathy Moro. Um, the last red item of restricted activities provides that they can spend the night for, for work purposes, but they must follow the sweat, the self quarantine requirements of this ordinance. So if we eliminate the definition of self quarantine, um, then we've got something hanging there.
Thank you. I'm willing to throw that piece in.
That's why we pay you the big bucks.
But, but, but technically that bullet isn't in yet because it's never been added.
Correct.
Okay.
So what do we do, Kathy, to make my motion stand?
Well, I would just leave in, uh, the only time we're going to really need to define self quarantine is if we add that last bullet. And then we could just, instead of saying, uh, follow the self quarantine requirements of this ordinance, we could just say they self quarantine and what that means, uh, and go right, add right in there, proceed from the ferry airport directly without making any stops, blah, blah, blah. And that would apply to transient workers commuting for restricted activities.
That's what I said. I go, I'm adding that into my motion. And I, Chris, you're second?
I second it because I, I understood it as, uh, you eliminated everything, but that, that red bullet was included as, because I'm looking at it as part of the draft. So I was under the impression that it would be
I was too.
Part of the motion and if Kathy wants you to amend it to include the self quarantine clause, that's fine. But to Andre, just to be clear, does that, as I understood it, that red bullet facilitates your concern, I think, with, um, the ability for these, uh, crews to basically quarantine on site. Correct?
You have to ask Kathy that.
All right.
Yeah, well, it would because it basically, the way it's written right now, um, if you're required to spend the night, you have to go, you have to follow the self quarantine requirements. Now, the self quarantine requirements say that you have to proceed directly from the ferry airport directly to your residence. In other words, where you're staying, without making any stops, remain at the residence except for medical care emergencies. And so what we would do is, uh, we'd just make it clear. And, and let me, I can work on that. Make it clear that the self quarantine requirements apply during the time you're not in your respective work locations. So I can add that self quarantine definition right to the bullet instead of having it hanging out there. Because really, that's the only place that it's going to apply.
Yes. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I'm already, I'm fine with that. I, I, I assume we're gonna, you know, have another situation with this meeting again. Um, that we're going to get this written up from you and we're going to have to continue it and vote on it tomorrow or Friday because that's what I think at this point. And I don't know, Martha will probably agree with me that, you know, I'm going to have to read this before I have a final vote.
Right.
I agree with Mark. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then we. Uh, there's a motion on the floor and a second, um, assuming that the right is what we all want and Kathy will do a great job. Can we call a vote?
Well, we can call the vote as long as Andre and Martha realize that we're calling the vote to approve it. But if you want to have, if you want to have final approval after the draft is, is written, then I think we should, um, make the motion, amend the motion to say that you're instructing Kathy Morola to write up a draft to the effect that you wanted, that you want.
And can we, can we meet this? I'm sorry, can we then meet this weekend?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we can. We'll have to obviously, Mark, or what?
Kathy, Ken, there's more, I mean, there's been more than one change, so the whole thing is going to have to be, um, reviewed.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not just this one section.
Okay. I'm, I'm willing to amend my motion to ask Kathy Morola to write up what we just talked about and to review it at the next meeting this week before it expires.
Second, Laura, someone's got to, Chris, you got to amend your second.
Give you the whole thing.
Oh, I meant my second.
Okay. Um, Molly, are you clear what we're voting on?
No, I'm not. I'd love to have that re-stated.
I think anyone is.
Go ahead.
On the latest motion, um, Molly, it was to eliminate the first paragraph. Uh, anyone arriving, uh, first paragraph of section nine, excuse me, anyone arriving on Block Island, dot, dot, dot. And eliminate the second paragraph, all residents, dot, dot, dot. So therefore nine starts with the only transient workers, that paragraph going down and including the restricted activities that we already voted on paragraph. Uh, Kathy is going to amend this paragraph with the, um, self quarantine definitions and examples. Assuming that she amends it, um, we then eliminate paragraph, starting with the term self quarantine means that you must down to the bottom of nine. Uh, the, including all of the red or the work, including office workers and worker activities, uh, and outside activities.
So your plan is to eliminate the first two paragraphs to then to, um, rewrite the paragraph beginning the term self quarantine and add that to one of the bullets. But to eliminate the rest of number nine, starting with the term shelter in place gets eliminated and all the rest of number nine gets eliminated.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, Andre?
Aye.
Uh, Sven?
Aye.
Uh, Chris?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
I vote affirmative, five to one, nothing to vote carries, motion carries. All right, um, so then we're the end of nine. So anything on, anything we need to do with in terms of ten? I don't think so.
Well, ten, ten is, you know, ten's self explanatory.
Yeah. Is that state?
What?
Is that a state requirement?
You want me to read it?
No, no, is that a state, is ten a state requirement?
Probably not because it talks about Block Island.
Can someone read it for the people who don't have?
Yeah, it's the number 10. So is any person who may have come in contact, in close contact with a person who has COVID-19 must immediately self quarantine for 14 days before coming to Block Island.
Sven votes.
All right, somebody's making noise out there. Turn your mics off. Thank you. Go ahead, Sven.
I vote to keep that paragraph.
All right, we'll, if we're not going to remove it, we can just, we'll just go over and if somebody wants to remove it. Anyone want to remove it?
No.
All right.
No.
All right. Number 11, any person who's under self quarantine direction, who wants to go to Black Island Medical Center must first contact the medical center for instructions. I think that's what the governor is saying also. I don't think we need to do anything with that. Question? Question?
Nope, I'm agreeing with you.
Um, number 12, all persons shall comply fully with, persons on Block Island shall comply fully with federal, state, local emergency directives and orders shall be from time to time amended. That, I think stays in there.
Boilerplate.
Uh, Sven, yeah, okay. Um, next, 13 is all short-term lodging owners and operators, including agents and employees, shall cease taking reservations to occupy, which would occupy prior to June 12th. Um, that, the, we would occupy prior to June 12th is a, is a suggested. Um, any comments or discussion about that?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, again, my concern will be, right now, it's, it's not consistent with the state and I'm not even, I'm not even implying to open it or drop this, but I don't know how, um, how we monitor this with the online platforms, because I've been told that the inventory has gone up since we last checked, which might have been two months ago, I'm, I'm not really sure. Um, and again, the enforceability of it. Um, I do know that the, we, we received a letter from, um, the real estate agents, all of them, I think, signed on to it, which was very nice that they, they informed us, um, I think they're, they're starting June 12th or 13th, I'm not sure, I didn't, I, I don't have it here in front of me. I'm sure you all remember reading it. Um, but this is also gonna be, have a lot to do with what the state does, specifically when it comes to, um, lifting the out-of-state quarantine, which is kind of the, the wild card right now, that's the moving target. Um, so I don't think the governor's planning on doing that before Memorial Day, but I think June 12th, I, I'd rather see it somewhere around June 1st or June 8th, just to work out all the kinks before we get to July. Um, and again, it's, it's, I have concerns with enforceability. I think it's gonna happen before that, I think we all do, but I hope it doesn't, but I think people are gonna, are gonna rent before that and I don't know if we can actually do anything about it, you know?
Andre, Boojum?
Um, I know for a fact that, um, real estate agents have bookings prior to June 12th. So, uh, and they were, they're looking for direction. So I think we need to discuss this and give them some direction. Go ahead.
Jim, go ahead.
Um, I didn't mean to cut you off, Andre, I just, uh, just wanted to get in before we spend too much time on the 12th. There was nothing magic about that, it was, it was Kathy, it was a discussion I had with Kathy, uh, basing it on, um, phase three at the state level, which has been described as first or second week in June, um, we, uh, I, I thought about the 8th, which is the Monday in the second week, thought about the 5th, which is the Friday at the end of the first week, but there's, there, there's no, uh, there's nothing, um, there's nothing magic about the 12th, I think if you wanted to go to the first.
Well, but Jim, the, the, the letter that Chris was mentioning from the Black Island Association of Realtors says that they've ceased taking reservations for June since May, since mid-March, um, June 13th, June 13th seems to be the kickoff week for most of the offices, and then they later say that their lease, that there are leases in place in May and through June 12th, do we need to cancel these, question mark? So they're looking at, um, they're looking at June 13th as a kickoff date for most of the offices.
Ken?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Um, and remember that this also expands beyond real estate.
Um, right.
I, i- it's, it's hotels, inns, B and Bs. Um, my, my gut is not to entertain anything till after Memorial Day, period. Like, if, if we can, if we can, I'd like to influence that decision and, and push it to after Memorial Day. Um, and I said earlier, the quarantine, the out-of-state quarantine is gonna dictate a lot of what's gonna happen with this, you, you still will get maybe some in-state um, uh, reservations. But if the out-of-state quarantine is in effect a week after Memorial Day and someone has a, has a rental, whether it's a room or a house, and they have to quarantine, because all these entities are gonna have to notify their, their clients that these things are in effect. Um, I think that's part of the, what the rest is. Will they wanna come? So you know, I don't think moving it earlier hurts, um, or, or hurts or helps. I just, I think after Memorial Day is the focus though.
Further comments?
I agree with Chris, um, you know, uh, listening to the state and, you know, just going, um, I think anything before, anything before Memorial Day right now on Block Island, I believe is wishful thinking. So, um, but hopefully that will change, but judging by trends and whatnot, and what's going around in the Massachusetts and everything else, I highly doubt that anything before Memorial Day on Block Island is gonna happen, but, um, hopefully that's, that's not the case.
So I'll make a motion to change, um, the date, June 12th, 2020 to June 1st, 2020.
Uh, can, can you, can I ask to, do we make that June 3rd, which is just the Wednesday, if we're keeping Wednesday meetings? Or do you want it Monday?
Um, yeah, that's why, as far as an expiration, this is a start, this is a start date. This is a, this is a start date.
You want it June 1st?
Oh, I'm just suggesting it, I don't know, I mean, it could be June 8th.
I second the motion of June 1st.
Motion made and seconded, June 1st, um, um, all short-term lodging owners and operators, including their agents and employees, shall cease taking reservations, new reservations pertaining to occupancy dates which occur prior to June 1st, 2020.
Now we're on to discussion, right?
Yep.
Uh, what about, what about the workers that we just talked about that may be coming over, assuming that this all passes, uh, who would be staying in a hotel?
Uh, can I speak to that? It, the, the last sentence?
Catherine, go ahead.
Provided, however, the cancellation provision shall not apply to housing for persons engaged in restricted activities.
Thank you very much. The workers can make a reservation in a hotel or somewhere for that, prior to June 1st. Right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Martha, did you have something?
Well, yeah, I'm still, um, asking the question about if somebody had a lease outstanding, and, and we're up to five construction workers, can they come back?
Answer?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure what a lease outstanding, can you clarify that for me, Martha?
Uh, so, workers had, had a lease for a house through June, and then when everything got shut down, they left. And they, can they come back? Um, before June 1st?
I think based on the exception that Kathy just read, if they're associated with restricted activities, um, that, that accepts them from the rental, uh, restriction, and as long as they complied with everything else and the applicable state quarantines, they would be allowed.
Yeah, that would be, if they, uh, because the, the question that I've gotten is regarding a very specific, uh, property, um, and the, they're not living on site, they're living in a different, a different location because the house is under construction.
Right, so, 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 so we have two things about their situation to deal with. One is can they come here and work? And the answer is yes. And then the other is can they stay here and, can they come here and stay? And I think there's an exception allowed, uh, as Kathy just referred to, um, that would allow them to stay there, uh, if, if they, if they had already arranged for it and it wasn't in violation of our rental, uh, constraints. So if the question comes to me from that, based on this ordinance, my answer is yes.
As of what date? Effective date of the ordinance?
Uh, as of the effective date of, of the, of the revote.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Um, I think we should stick with June 12th. That's my opinion. It's, it, I think it's cause, gonna cause some issues. Um,
Okay. Guys, Chris willing?
So the date is, it's gonna be a moving target regardless. I'm just trying to, this, this June 1st is, is, is to like slow the target down, so at least there's an objective where you have to keep in mind that the out-of-state quarantine is gonna affect most of this, and this goes for marinas as well. I mean, I don't, you know, that's a whole different ball of wax. Um, so hypothetically, say, the out-of-state quarantine is lifted, you know, the Monday after Memorial Day, then what? You know, and then hypothetically say it's not lifted till mid-June. That means people have to read, this, there, there is no, it's a moving target. So I'm just putting June 1st or June 8th, you could, or June 12th, but it, it's gonna change probably before we get there. And the, and the unfortunate part is the real estate agents and the hotels and the inns and the B and Bs have to understand that. They can't, you know, if, they want us to tell them when they could start taking reservations, we can't do that until we know what the state is doing with, with the out-of-state quarantine, if these people are coming from out of state. Now technically, as the state, um, um, orders are written, they can take a reservation from somebody in-state, but we're asking them not to. Right? So, I mean, this is kind of like, uh, it's, it's, we're, we're making it part of the ordinance and at the same time, we're asking for everybody's cooperation, but, um, you know, the, when someone books or wants to book a room for, before Memorial Day, and I'm telling him, no, please don't, uh, because if they're coming from out of state, they're gonna have to quarantine. And if they're coming from in-state, they're gonna have to shelter in place until that's lifted. I mean, this isn't an easy, easy, um, thing to give you a schedule on, other than saying sometime in June. So I put June 1st because it could always be moved later, but if we move it later and it happens earlier, then we're gonna be in the same boat, so. Um, right now though, I want everybody to keep in mind, this is allowed in the state. Short-term visitation or short-term rentals are allowed in the state of Rhode Island with provisions, obviously.
Further discussion?
Do you want me to amend the motion?
To?
To June 12th?
I'm comfortable with the first.
I mean, what, we're gonna be back having this discussion probably in a week or two, anyway. We, and that, it can be moved in, but I understand what, what our short-term rental, um, companies are asking for, but it's not something that we can deliver until we know what the state is gonna do with out-of-state quarantine, because that affects them the most. Am I wrong?
But isn't, didn't the Realtors say June 12th?
The Realtors did, Martha, but that doesn't, that doesn't apply to, you know, that, that's just one part of the big picture. There's still hotel rooms, B and Bs and inns, and there's also, uh, inventory, last I checked, of 96, um, houses on VRBO and Airbnb.
Okay.
I, I think, Ken, I think this is all about planning, and so everybody's just trying to figure out a date so they can start planning. To Chris's point, it's probably gonna change. My feeling is the earlier, after Memorial Day, the earlier, better allows people to plan. It's probably gonna change.
Okay, I'll call a vote. Alls in favor of the motion, uh, Andre?
Yeah, alright, like, you know, that's.
Alright, that'd be yes. Chris?
Aye.
Uh, Sven?
Aye.
Martha?
Um, aye, aye.
I vote affirmative, that's, motion carries. Alright. Uh, Andre, go ahead.
Alright, so may I, uh, now that we've got, um, um, we've got this, we're gonna get this, now, we're, we're gonna continue this and then we're gonna vote on this at some other time?
Yeah, you wanted, you wanted to look at the final, you wanted to look at the final.
I think that's great, um, and I just have a couple of questions about now, we've, we've moved into, um, I think you've heard a lot tonight about, uh, moving to be in conformance with what the state's saying. And, um, I just wanna be abundantly clear that, um, I have, Jim, I'm gonna address you on that, and I know, I know, um, uh, let's see, I don't know if Ben Carlo is still here, but Jim, I'll address you, because you, we did get a letter from the chief, and, um, there are two places in this letter that, um, that's pretty much addressed crowds, and, um, and I agree. It's, uh, some of these won't be enforceable if large groups of people start to disregard them. Um, and another one says, you know, it's obvious if a few hundred people come here at once, the enforcement of these matters is going to be impossible. So I get that from a, uh, from a local, from the local point of view, but as we move toward, going toward the recommendation of what the state says, the governor said today that, you know, the state has got resources, uh, just, just, you know, uh, deployed. And so, and when we get this back, I wanna be abundantly clear and I want it to be, um, I would like, Jim, you to reach out to the governor's office to, um, to, to, um, reassure us and let us know that, and ask the question, you know, if we're gonna be in line with what the state is offering, uh, you know, and, and the ordinances they put forth, will the state also offer their resources to Block Island to, to enforce these things? Because we know that, you know, like with the Health Department and, you know, Department of Business Regulation, I mean, they come out once in a while, um, but we have a different issue here. And she did say today, you know, the, she, her resources are deplo- deployed, and but the, what the issue is, is we know that Block Island rare- rarely sees this kind of, um, assistance from the state. And one of her biggest concerns was the high density. She said today at her, at her, um, you know, the, uh, at her news conference, she did say today that her biggest concern is, you know, people in high density. And these are your, and these are your, the chief's concerns also. So I wanna be, I would just wanna be, make it abundantly clear that, um, before I vote on this, going along with the state, that the state is gonna offer their resources to Block Island. Um, should we do that? So could you, could you call in and check in on that, Jim?
I, I, I can, I've al- I've already been in contact, um, are, uh, with the state police. I, I've also been in contact with, um, representatives of the governor's office. Um, Bill McComb has also, I, I, I know the chief has, there's, there's, uh, regular calls with chiefs. So we'll continue, we'll continue that and I'll, and I'll, uh, I'll make a particular effort in the, in the coming days. Um, the, the other thing that, that the, that the governor has talked about and that is in inherent really in the letter that the chief wrote and that I wrote is that if we set things up properly and we inform people and they're educated, that increases the chances that we don't have a case where, um, and I know everybody listening knows this, um, we don't have a case where, um, it's, it's, uh, unmanageable in the, in the, in the moment that it's happening. Um, the, Dave Sniffin and I have spent some time and others talking about the beach, and I think I'm gonna invite him to, uh, kind of, kind of appear at the next town council meeting because that's, I think, another thing that we're gonna wanna manage. It's a place where we're gonna want people, but we don't want them close together. Um, so we're gonna be in contact with DEM on that, uh, the harbor, and, and also, uh, kind of the, the general population, so all of those will be true.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've also had indication that the state police will be here to enforce the state regulations, is that correct?
Oh, I, 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 I have had conversations with our, our communications, our conversation with communication with state police. And, and their, um, their directive in general to all communities, they haven't said specifically, but, and I'm not, uh, completely conversant in the relationship in previous summers. Um, so, uh, it's probably better for me to get back to you with a little bit more detail.
Okay. All right.
Well, okay, just one, but since you brought up the beaches, I did get the confirmation. It came up much earlier. It's not really directly relevant, but just for information, the Blues on the Block is not happening this summer.
Okay.
So that's one more event, you know, we don't have to think, worry about.
Okay. All right. Anything else on, uh, anything else on that? Um.
When are we going to meet?
Well, we haven't finished the agenda.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question? This is Kathy Marola. We seem to have skipped number one, uh, the effective dates. We, we did not fill in those blanks.
You're right, we didn't.
Well, wouldn't it be effective when ours expires?
Well, we've, we've got, if, what day is today? Today's the sixth?
Yeah.
And we're meeting, we're meeting before the ninth, right? We're meeting before the ninth, aren't we?
Yes.
So we'll put the date in then. What date do we want? Uh, that's what you're asking for, isn't it, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I'm, I'm asking for, when the third amendments are going to be effective and what date, in the next sentence, the entire ordinance as amended, uh, expires. Midnight on what date?
Sounds like they'll be, it sounds like they'll be effective on, what, midnight of May 8th? Right?
That's how it is right now.
Yeah.
Right. So they'll take a. Go ahead.
When is the new one going to be effective until?
Oh, no, I meant, I meant the new one's going to go into effect on the.
Oh, yes, 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 that's fine.
Right. And effective until? Effective until June 1st, right?
No.
No.
That seems awful short. I mean, we could try and tie it with when the governor's talking about phase two, but we don't really know when that's going to be.
No.
Um, I mean, we could make it a far out date and then adjust it again. Kathy, what's your feeling? What's easiest? Kathy?
Line of order?
Molly, go ahead.
Can you call a brief recess? Counselor, uh, Boudreau is offline for a minute.
I'm back. I, yeah, I'm back. My, my, my computer died as soon as Jim started answering me about enforcement. So, um, I didn't get any of that. I apologize.
That was a great answer, too.
I'll send you an email, Andre.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll chase it down.
Now we're talking about what, what we want the effective date of the, uh, new ordinance to be in terms of the, of an end date, Andre.
Did I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Chris, please.
Have it the Friday before Memorial Day in case we have to address something else, which is the 22nd.
Any other comments on that?
We can, yes, we can always, Kathy, there's really, I think, a question to you. We can always amend this anytime we want. The question is, do we need to force ourselves to amend it? Chris's comment would be before Memorial Day, we're forcing ourselves to do it. If we put it at the end of June, we can still amend it anytime. Is that correct, Kathy?
You can amend it any minute of any day because it's an emergency matter. But my, but you do have a June 1st date in here. Um, so it would probably.
Why don't we just make it June 1st then? I mean, that's, that's the one clause that we most likely are going to need to change.
Right.
You know, and I, I mean, depending on what changes at the state level, there might be something we need to change beforehand. But I guess we could address it then. But if we need to pick a date, make it June 1st.
Any other comments?
Can we just do a quick, uh, can somebody do a very quick summary of what we've done or what we're proposing to do? I know it will be out in draft ordinance, but I want to be sure I've got everything.
I can try to tackle it if you want me to.
Yeah, just, just, just a summary, that's all.
All right, um, so what we're doing is we're making this new ordinance, the Third Amendment, effective as of the time when the Second Amendment expires. We're keeping everything in full force and effect until midnight on June 1st. Um, we're deleting paragraph three, four, and five and to basically bring us in line with the state law. We are.
And those, excuse me, Kathy, those reference, for people listening who don't have the document.
Um, the restaurants and the bars, the gatherings of public people, and the non-essential town meetings.
Thank you.
Um, well, I, I won't say what, if we're leaving it in, I won't mention it. Um, seven, seven is the one that's going to be kind of interesting, so I'll get to that in a second. Uh, nine, we're taking out the first two paragraphs of nine and basically confining nine to transient commuting workers. Uh, we're broadening the restricted activities to include the redline items of water testing, radon testing, water filter maintenance, personal property moving, real estate and other appraising legal.
Kathy, 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 excuse me, you're, we're shifting essential to, uh, restrictions.
Restricted, correct.
Yeah. As you're outlining.
Yes, and, and that, do you want me to repeat the whole list or I can do that if you'd like.
I don't think you need to repeat the list.
All right. We're taking out shelter in place, outside activities, work activities, the whole rest of paragraph nine, um, under the assumption that that is just going to comport with the state. We are changing the short-term lodging owners and operators from, uh, to anything that would occur, any rental that would occur, the occupancy of which would occur prior to June 1 of two, 2020. Going back to paragraph seven, that's the one that's, it's kind of in flux right now. Um, I, I do understand we're going to have a general provision that any of the licenses that we're going to not suspend, um, are going to have a general provision that says they must comply with the, the, the state rules on gatherings of people. As to the taxi operators, right now, it's my understanding, they don't have, uh, you're going to connect with them on whether they want to operate, if they don't want to operate, whether we can make an exclusion of that. We're extending, uh, for May.
Excuse me, Kathy, I thought that was, that was, that was the one thing that was voted.
Yes.
Well, the one that I had that was voted, I could be wrong, was the extension from May 15th to June 30th, extending expiration date of licenses.
And then I have, I, I thought it was also to, um, hold an abeyance until next year.
Yes.
I can do that. I, I can do that. At one point, it was mentioned that people wanted to meet with the taxi operators first.
No, but it was, I'm quite sure it was voted.
All right, then I will collect that in my notes. Um, special events are going to issue, outdoor entertainment is going to issue, and all these licenses are going to be, again, subject to the state rules on the number of people restrictions. And we are postponing the discussion on bicycles, motorized bicycles, tricycles, and motor scooter licenses and rental vehicles.
Great, thank you.
And I would welcome any clarification if I miss something.
I think you got it. So I believe the motion on the table is to, uh, is to have the effective, uh, date, the end date of the ordinance, the current, the, the, the proposed ordinance amendments to be June 1st. Am I correct? Yes, all right. I'll call the vote. All is in favor. Andre?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
I vote affirmative. Motion carries. Um, we still have two items on the agenda, but I'd like to make a motion to continue this meeting until Friday. Second?
Second.
Uh, and is anyone have a particular time? Want to get it out of the way in the morning or get it waiting till the afternoon?
I think we should do it in the morning, um, because I know a lot of businesses out there are looking for guidance from us right now. And, um, I, I, I apologize for, uh, making them wait. Um, and I, you know, it's, I apologize, it's, you know, but here we are. And, um, um, I think, as you can see, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to align ourselves with the state and, um, for that. So I assume that a lot of that's going to spill out into your individual businesses. So, um, yeah. Um, so like I said, I apologize on behalf of myself and I think on the rest of us that we didn't get to this today. But I think this, um, document in front of us, carefully going through it, you know, it took a lot of time, but we needed to spend the time on that. Um, but like I said, please bear with us a little bit more and, um, we'll, we're going to get to. I, I think, you know, the, the businesses are looking to us for input and I apologize for not getting there today. But we, we need to have a lot of thought on that.
Kathy, does that give you a good time to get it done?
I'll get it done.
I'm sure you will. Thank you. Uh, Chris Willie?
Just to make a point, the state's got a lot of information specific to the businesses in opening Rhode Island. So on that website, Opening Rhode Island, and I urge everybody to go look at it because those are the, those are the, that's the guidance that we're going to take for your individual businesses moving forward. Um, so everybody take advantage. I know there's a lot of information that was supposed to be uploaded tonight. So take a look at it tomorrow. Um, and, uh, see where you fall. And that's, that's for everything from retail to real estate to restaurants, et cetera. So take advantage of the resource and, and, and see what the, the state has planned.
All right, Sven?
Uh, did we want to go in the morning or the afternoon of Friday?
Morning.
Morning, are you good? Let's get it out of the way.
Nine?
Nine o'clock. Did everyone do that?
Yes.
All right, uh, motion is to, uh, continue this meeting on, at nine o'clock Friday morning. Um, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Andre? Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Uh, Martha?
Aye.
I vote affirmative. Uh, so we'll be continuing this Friday morning at 9:00 AM. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Chris. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Andre?
Aye.
Martha says aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.